Good evening. I want to call our meeting to order and say, welcome to Tuesday, February 7th, 2023, School Board Business Meeting, regular business meeting. And if you all will now please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to say thank you and welcome again. We have a pretty good agenda tonight. I'm going to try to move through it efficiently. And up on our agenda, normally our first meeting of the month, we have an update from ACEA. I don't see anyone from ACEA here. Oh, please pardon me. We'll give you space now to come in and give us your ACEA update.
Hello, Chair Surtin, Board Members, District Staff. I'm Dr. Crystal Testman from ACEA. I'm the Service Unit Director and Vice President Instructional. Thank you for hearing us. It's important that we get this time for you to hear from all the employees that we represent. First, we'd like to say Happy Black History Month because Black History is American history. So, we're very excited to be celebrating that in our county. And then, just want to thank my bargaining team. I have a lot of ESPs from different job categories working with me to go thoroughly through the contract. I'm sure we've provided you all with a lot of reading material and we'll continue to do so. So, thank you for looking at whatever we pass and, and hearing their, their concerns. Also, we, I've had some good conversations about overtime and comp time with some district staff being available to help with the custodial vacancies that we have, just hoping that that can be extended into other areas where there are vacancies and, you know, places where other employees have to pick up the slack. And if we have employees who are willing and wanting to do overtime or have comp time and they can be compensated and take the stress off and, and fill some of those voids, I hope we can be creative as a district in more than just one job category. And then, just, we met today with some of the transportation members and some of the members from maintenance. I know, Dr. McNeely, we saw you out there at transportation. Thank you for being hands-on. We appreciate that. Just, you know, we, there are a lot of concerns, looking, you know, from, from the district looking in, I know there are concerns and there are concerns from the inside of transportation and maintenance looking out and needing, needing even more from everybody. One of the concerns that really came up today was that we're just continuing to, to bleed maintenance positions. People are going to higher-paying outer, outer jobs. People are retiring and they're not being replaced or their job is being dissolved. Or, and it's hard for us to attract people at the, the cost that we're willing to pay our valuable maintenance staff. So, just, I know that you all are looking at job descriptions later and such, but just keeping that in mind as well. Anything we can do to fill the vacancies in, in maintenance and all of our vacancies would be appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Board Chair. I'm Carmen Ward and I'm the Alachua County Education Association President and that is the union of workers in our Alachua County Public Schools and, in the professional association. And I just wanted to highlight, I, I went to a meeting last week and the focus, one of the big focuses was how do we deal with retention of staff and teachers? And it was really reframing it to work on helping our educators to thrive. And I just wanted to bring this up. It's piggybacking on what Dr. Testman said, that there are things we can do and we don't have a dedicated committee to staff retention. And also, in the strategic plan that's on the agenda tonight, I am going to highly recommend that we have staff and teacher retention as a goal in our strategic plan and make that a focus that we, that we give some energy to and some budget to. So, that's, that's my two cents, retention before recruitment because we are recruiting people and we're losing them rather quickly. And there are reasons for that and we need to address those reasons. We need to figure out ways to have our educators and our staff feel less stress at work. Happy educators make happy students. And, and I know we all want that. So, that's a couple of things that I came back inspired about that I wanted to bring to your attention. We also, for Black History Month, we have something called ShareMyLesson.com. So, teachers pay teachers isn't necessary for union members because we share it freely in ShareMyLesson.com through the American Federation of Teachers. And so, I just wanted to put out there, there's awesome African-American history lessons in ShareMyLesson.com. And I want to thank the District Calendar Committee for their collaboration. We did collaborate. We even did a poll of our members about the calendar and we made some compromises. Unfortunately, most of the teachers really wanted a later spring break week. And so, like 70% of them wanted it to be later because it is a long time from spring break to the end of the school year. And that is some of our most challenging weeks in the school system. So, I just wanted to bring that up and also say that we are going to be negotiating this Thursday. And so, we will have a bargaining update for our members after that. And I also wanted to give a shout-out to the LGBTQ Critical Guide Review Committee. ACA had a representative on that committee and we appreciate the collaboration on, on that as well. So, that is the State of the Union for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward and Dr. Testman. Indeed, it is a partnership that we must have between our service unit and the district. And there are many issues that you brought up that this board is thinking about seriously. We know there, those are concerns, not just with our district, but every school district, actually employers nationwide with recruitment and retention of qualified staff. And you, I don't have to tell you, but you know the pressures that we have as an organization related to doing things that are financial in nature. Because that's not all decided, you know, the pot of money isn't decided by us. And oftentimes, what we get has lots of strings attached to it. But about the same token, then there are other things that we, we have to try to work together with to do, to make our school district the place of choice for employees. So, thank you for sharing. I ask that you all also be willing partners with us as we enter into the negotiating session season as well. All right. I have a little echo to the gentleman up in the back. I'm not sure. And I, and I think it's because of my attention deficit, it's kind of bothersome to me. So, with that, we, the next item on the agenda is for us to adopt our current agenda as presented. No one spoke to me about wanting to pull anything, but if we could get a motion to move forward. Thank you. It's a motion by Ms. Abbott, second by Ms. McGraw. Any comments or discussion on, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you. And I will mention that Dr. Rockwell is not with us tonight. She's ill and hopefully she'll be back up on her feet real soon to join us in person, join us at our future meetings. All right. Approval of the Regular School Board Workshop Minutes from January 11th were distributed to us.
Some move.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. McGraw, second by Dr. McNeely. Any comments or discussion, correction? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, 4-0. Next, approval of the Regular School Board Meeting Minutes from January 17th, 2023?
Some move.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Ms. McGraw, second by Ms. Abbott. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Motion passes. And we'll take this space now for Board Member and Superintendent Announcements. All right, I saw Ms. McGraw. If you, if you can go ahead, if you turn your light off so I can, I'll know that you're done. Go ahead. Ms. McGraw, and then we'll come down. We'll just work our way down.
A good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening to all who are in attendance. A few things I want to share. First, I want to say congratulations to the Lady Hornets on District Champs. They continue to do well. We think anytime my children are doing well, we want to try to recognize them. Also, I want to say congratulations to Dr. Cheryl Johnson at Hawthorne for the recognition of the gender diversity in AP Computer Sciences. And I'm so excited about that. We, based, and it's based on the number of females, students that are in computer science. So, thank her for the work that she is doing with her, with her students. And also, I want to give a huge shout-out to ESC Department and Student Services, to some of our district staff who are present today. Thank you for us working on strategic visioning to help some of our more challenging students. A lot of hard work and I want to say to them, I'm so grateful for the teamwork because I believe, I mean my mind, these are words that do not rhyme, but we as, us together, these are words that last forever. And that's what I have now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. McGraw. Ms. Abbott, did you have something?
Sure. I had the opportunity to attend the first meeting of one of the committees that I'm assigned to, which is the Education Foundation. And they are still in need of mentors for their state take stock in children program. And so, if any of you might be interested in, in being a mentor for a student, you could contact the Education Foundation. I also had the opportunity, I was invited by an instructional coach at Mabane to shadow her for the day. And so, I went out and had the opportunity to do that and learned a lot about the roles of instructional coaches in the district. And finally, I'd like to thank all the teachers that have welcomed me into their classroom to read during Black History Month. It's been a lot of fun. And so, I always appreciate visiting classrooms and, and that's all I have.
Dr. McNeely?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank all of the staff that had whatever portion that you had to do with the Teacher of the Year. It was a fantastic event. I've been to 30-plus Teacher of the Year events. I think this one was even greater and best. I don't know, I have to go back and look at some of the other videos, but I really enjoyed the presentation. I'm happy for all of the finalists and happy for all of the representatives of your schools. You were absolutely wonderful. And I'm sure that the Bob Hughes Teacher of the Year next year will be even greater. So, thank you and congratulations again to all of our extraordinary teachers who were represented and honored on that night. Also, I'd like to say that I attended the Alachua County Elementary Student Art Exhibit out over on Main Street. You were talking about some great artwork. I wish some of them, the pieces, had been up for sale, but it was absolutely wonderful to see elementary-age students able to present that kind of art. If you haven't had a chance, I hope it's still up and running, that you will have a chance to go by the gallery and take a look. Congratulations to all of the students that participated. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Andrew, before you give yours out, let me go ahead and say my few things and then we'll let you wrap up, okay? So, this is Black History Month and I want to thank Mr. Cardigy-Woodson. I'm forever grateful for him starting with something that started as a week and then expanded to now what's a month. But Ms. Testman or Ms., and Dr. Testman and Ms. Ward actually did say it, African-American history is American history and we should not confine it to just one month. You know, there is already a state statute that's been on the books for some 27 years or so that kind of mandates that African-American history and the Holocaust be taught in Grace K through 2 infused in its curriculum. And Alachua County District is one of 12 out of 67 who has attained exemplary status. That status was pursued shortly before I came on the board and completed after I was elected, after I took my seat. So, I was reminded of the resources that are, have been accumulated here locally. So, there's not even the need for the source that, the site that the AFT has maintained. Our district, along with Uris of Florida, Aquan Jones, and so many other entities, have curated a, a, a lot of resources and materials to make it very easy for teachers to go and access materials so that they can infuse these, this important topic into K-12. It doesn't have to just be maintained because I tell people, we are more than Malcolm, Martin, and Rosa, much more than those, than, and, and it's just so much more to our history than that. And finally, I'd like to congratulate the Gainesville High School Girls Basketball Team on their district championship as well. Their coach, by Jaslyn Rollins, who was a former player at Beaufort High School, and she's back. I didn't realize she was back in the county at Beaufort coaching, so that was kind of a good thing there to come back and now coach at a school that's not her alma mater, but she's there. And if I'm not mistaken, I think I read also that Santa Fe High School Boys won their district basketball team. I think they won district as well. And I want to commend them, all of our student athletes for a job well done. Alachua County is indeed, our name is on the map for more schools than one. And you know, we, the, the children win, and I tell, y'all have heard me say this before, that many students play their entire athletic career, starting at sometimes Parks and Rec League or whatever, you know, a, a, an unsanctioned league, and they play all the way through high school and college and professionally, and they never play for a championship. I mean, if you really think about it, everybody that plays and is an athlete, they may play the game and they may make really good money, but there are very few people that actually play and win a championship or sometimes, some type. So, it's a really, a special moment. I tell the young people to really, to savor it because it, it doesn't, I mean, it's, it's a feeling that's indescribable. Nobody can tell you about that. So, with that, well, Mr. Andrew, I'll let you go ahead and share. And then, we have at 6:30, we have a time certain thing, you know, for our public hearing, but I think you have enough time that you can go ahead, okay?
Thank you, Mrs. Surtin. Along with our school board members, we'd like to share some other accomplishments of our students. There's been a lot, and there's been a lot said. Certainly, I'd have to echo, you know, all of our students and faculty at all of our Alachua County Elementary, Middle, and High Schools are joining others across the nation to celebrate Black History. And I would encourage anyone that has the opportunity that can join one of the programs to go out and see one. I'll be joining, I think GHS is, has one this week that the Black Student Union's putting on. I'm gonna go join them for that. But they're happening in our elementary schools. Stephen Foster has like the Wax Museum, right? There's all kinds of great things happening, so. And as Mrs. Surtin said, you know, Black History is American history and it happens all the time. History is being made. It was made today and it continues to be made. And so, I couldn't agree with her more on, we, we need to celebrate all the time. Now, one other program being honored this month is Career and Technical Education. That's the month of February. So, I know our CTE team is, is highlighting achievements and accomplishments of CTE programs across the state of Florida, and that occurs this month, just FYI. And we have some excellent CTE programs here in the county. To piggyback on, on Board Member McGraw's statement, you know, Hawthorne was recognized for the Computer Science Female Diversity Award by College Board. That's advanced placement, if you will, AP for last year. And, and I quote, "They congratulated Hawthorne for preparing their female students for the high-paying, in-demand jobs of the future and giving them the opportunity to help solve some of society's most challenging problems." So, as we're talking about advanced placement in College Board, as you know, the highest score you can earn on an advanced placement exam is a five, which isn't a perfect score. However, recently, we had three Alachua County Public School students beat the general top AP score of five. They actually had perfect scores according to the College Board, and they earned perfect scores on their AP exams. Those students were from Beaufort High School. Those were, the students were Lucas Garcia, Katie Hee, and Tucker Shea. And we want to congratulate them on this rare accomplishment. So, join us in congratulating Lucas, Katie, and Tucker. Not to be outperformed, Gainesville High School students have earned the highest scores in the nation on rigorous college-level exams administered by Cambridge Assessment International Education. Gainesville High School had seniors Charles Yee, sophomores Nathan Collier and Yu Min Ko. They earned prestigious Cambridge International Learner Awards for earning top-in-the-U.S.A. scores on the rigorous Cambridge exams. So, please also join us in congratulating Charles, Nathan, and Yu Min. Recently this week, some of you may have seen Beaufort High School sophomore Madeline Urbine. She's a finalist in the prestigious U.S. Navy Band Artist Solo Competition, and she's going to be going to Washington, D.C. to compete in the final round of competition, I think, this week. And she'll perform with an ensemble selection with the Navy's Concert Band. So, as you can see, we do it in athletics, arts, academics, across the board. Students that are riding our buses, you know, our 125 district school buses are outfitted with Wi-Fi, so students have access to free Wi-Fi on those buses. And this, of course, is a result of the FCC's Emergency Connectivity Fund Program, and that was established, like many of you know, to expand internet access for students. A reminder for families, magnet applications are due February 14th, so that's next Tuesday at 4:00 p.m. Please get your magnet applications in for the district's academic and career and tech magnet programs. Also, speaking of the arts, I thoroughly enjoyed the Secondary Honor Choir performance last Friday evening. We had 130 of our students from Howard Bishop Middle School, Lincoln Middle School, Conapahaw Middle School, Beaufort High School, Eastside High School, Gainesville High School, and the Professional Academies Magnet at Lofton High School joined together with their choral directors, and they put on quite a show at Beaufort's last Friday night. So, great things are happening there in our choral area. As Dr. McNeely was mentioning art, certainly the K-12 Student Art Exhibit at the Thomas Center will be tomorrow, no, Thursday evening, February 9th at 6:30 p.m. And we're gonna have over 100 works of our students on display there from over 30 of our schools. There's gonna be awards presentation and a celebration of their work. Also, this, this, it was last week, last Thursday, I believe, 250 of our elementary and middle and high school students competed in our annual VEX Robotics Competition that was held at Lincoln Middle School. And I believe it was at least 70 teams registered for the event. They developed, built, and operated- They developed, built, and operated robots there on-site in the presence of judges. And the key there was teamwork. They had to work together as teammates to succeed there. So, I'm about to wrap this up. You might have heard it's Counselor Week, so we want to say thank you to our counselors. And if you see a counselor, please take a moment to thank them for all they do for our students. And then, we'd close out just in remembrance of one of our longtime educators, Mrs. Peggy Ferguson. She passed away recently. Our sincerest condolences go out to Mrs. Ferguson's family. And also, our condolences go out to Mrs. Elizabeth Beth Boils. She passed away last week, and she was a longtime educator here in Alachua County Public Schools. I thank you for your patience. Thank you, Mrs. Certain.
Thank you. Our time is really close. I have one sheet here for citizen input that is not related, it seems like, to a, an agenda item. So, I think we have time to go ahead and take Mr. Kali Blunt. Are you ready to come to receive us? While he comes to the mic, I'll tell y'all, like, Mr. Blunt is a walking history resource. It's, it's hard to find anybody who is as knowledgeable as he is about African-American history, and he is an excellent communicator. Mr. Blunt, you have three minutes with the board.
Thank you. And thank you, Chair Certain, for mentioning Florida Statute 1003.42 that was originally passed in 1994 with 19 elements required to teach in schools, but the core element, the beginning of that law was the Paragraph H on Black History that the Black Caucus realized they were never gonna get through without bringing on many other interest groups, which they did. And it is sad that it's such a small number out of 67 counties that have complied since 1994. I remember in the civil rights era, I always talked about how long? Not long. And this is really taking forever. I had the pleasure recently of spending several days at the Medieval Fair, telling people about the history of the Moors. I actually had a booth where people came and asked for the narrative. And, and that's something that I tried 24 years ago and was kicked out of that fair. Now, they're paying for it. So, one thing that was very important that I said to people that day was that all humans make history, and only humans make history. And that's why it was a pleasure to be there to fill in that little-taught history about a black North African group that spent almost 800 years civilizing the Iberia Peninsula, building Europe's first university, commanding people to bathe and building public baths to do so, giving them ocean navigation, Columbus wouldn't have known about otherwise. So, so much history needs to be taught. And when someone's history is suppressed, that is diminishing or dismissing their humanity. And that's why, that suppressing African history was one of the main rationalizations of slavery, suppressing the humanity of the people who were captured and worked for no fee. So, I want Governor DeSatan, I'm sorry, oops, I mean Governor DeSantis, to understand that we're not going back, that history must be taught. In fact, all the histories of all people should be taught to our children if they are to be citizens of the world. We have to raise more than just ordinary workers. We need to raise lifelong thinkers. And the word "critical" is not scary, because critical thinking is what we want to teach to students, how to analyze and arrive at their own conclusions. So, I hope that we continue to teach the truth. It used to be a quote on your wall, or maybe it was at Lincoln Middle School. Abraham Lincoln said, "History is not history unless it is the truth."
Thank you, Mr. Blunt, for that. I think that was Lincoln. It wasn't here. I don't ever recall seeing that quote here in this room. And I will tell y'all, for years, and Dr. McNeely can attest to this, when the meetings used to air on Cox Channel 8, for years, there would be one or two people in the boardroom, and it was usually, one of them was Mr. Blunt, and he would use his three minutes every meeting to educate the board and share some portion of Black History. And he did that for years, not like one year. I'm talking, yeah, it was a long time. So, really, a few years ago, when I first came on the board, and this matter came up about the Black History Law, the, I think it was the 25th anniversary of that, being able to come on. He, we went over to Jacksonville, and he got to meet one of the state representatives that helped pass that, Representative Geraldine Thompson over in Jacksonville, along with our very own Cynthia, Dr. Cynthia More Chestnut, as well as Tony Hill. They were some of the sponsors of that bill, so. All right, so it's with 6:30, we have our public hearing now on some items, and Attorney Delaney will take care of those.
Good evening, Chair Certain.
Oh.
Chair Certain, members of the board, Superintendent Andrew, again, good evening. I have two different items for public hearing. This is an opportunity for any members of the public who wish to provide input, as well as, of course, members of the board, if you would like to do this process. We had our first reading of some proposed changes that impact job descriptions and qualifications. Madam Chair, I don't know if you would prefer grouping transportation together, or if you want to go one at a time, what your preference is.
So, there's no vote tonight, if I'm recalling correctly. If you would like to just take the transportation group together, that's fine, and then you can take the facilities or the maintenance area ones together.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So, there were two specific job positions in the Transportation Department. The first was bus attendant, and the second is bus driver. And again, there's a few small changes that were made to the job qualifications, as well as a couple of changes in other parts of that guideline. So, again, this is the opportunity for any members of the public or the board to provide their input at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shellnut. Do we have any callers, any citizens? Okay, I don't have any sheets. Is there anyone in the room who'd like to give citizen input on these two job description revisions? Okay, so, bring it back to the board now. And my colleagues, y'all have any other input that you'd like to give on either of these job descriptions? Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Moving on to the second item on the public hearing docket, deals with potential changes to job descriptions and qualifications for three positions within our Facilities Department. Those three positions are painter, plumber, and then the HARF Tech, which is the Heating, Air Conditioning, Refrigeration, and Ventilation Technician Positions. So, again, this is an opportunity for any members of the public or the board to provide their input at this time.
So, no callers yet? Anyone in the audience? My colleagues on the board? All right, let me go forward.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Shellnut. Okay. We'll close now the public hearing and proceed. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chair Certain. We do have a few policies up for public hearing, again, opportunity for the board and those in the public to provide input. We had our first reading at the previous board meeting, and then, you know, we have the public hearing and then the final reading. So, the first two policies or slash bylaws, the first is Bylaw 0147.1, and this bylaw really speaks to virtual travel, or virtual conferencing for school board members. The second policy is 6550, which speaks to employees attending virtual conferences. And I will turn it back over to Chair Certain for public hearing.
Do we have any phone callers? Any citizens in the auditorium that wish to speak to these two policy revisions? My colleagues, you have any? All right, Mr. Rella, you can proceed.
Thank you. The second batch is Policy 6152, Student Fees, Fines, and Charges, and Policy 6152.01, the waiver of school fees. So, we did have a pretty robust discussion last time, and did make some adjustments based on the feedback from the board, and those have been incorporated. I did want to mention, because it came up in the previous meeting, the youth that are in foster care automatically qualify for free and reduced lunch, so they don't necessarily need to have their separate section, which is why it's omitted, but they are included in the waiver of fees.
Thank you. We have, do we have any citizen input on the phone? Okay, anyone in the audience? Okay. Any of my colleagues? Okay. I do see that you did add that Item C from a similar, of Pier County. Thank you for taking care of that. All right, there, I think that's, I've, I've paged through now. I didn't have any markers on all of them. I think that was the last one, 6152.01, right? Okay. All right, now, we will close the public hearing, if there's no other input in that, and we will proceed with our agenda. And next up is our consent agenda. Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Certain, the superintendent recommends that the school board approve the consent agenda as described in Items 2 through 8.
Motion, please. Thank you. Motion by Dr. McNeely, second by Ms. Abbott. Any citizen input by phone? Okay, anybody in the audience? Any board member discussion? So, I did have one question, two, I'm not sure. Mr. Rella, if you can answer this. I emailed a thought, the field. So, Ms. Nguyen, you're back there? Let me find that item. It was on the Dyer Riddle Mills procurement. I had two questions. You might come into the mic, please? Okay, all right.
Good evening, board member, sorry, Chair Certain and board members and Superintendent Andrew. Your, the response was sent to everyone on the board via Superintendent Andrew. The response, I wanted it to be complete and thorough, so it was sent out rather late today, in the day. I received your email this morning. I can answer any questions that you have. I'd be absolutely more than happy to do.
So, I'm at an extreme disadvantage. I tried to get my email before the board meeting start, started today, so I haven't checked. When I left home today, it had not been sent. And when I got here to, I wasn't able to get my email. So, if you could, I'm not, I'm, it doesn't matter who tells me, but my question was, is I noticed we have a new company that's being proposed for concurrency review and GIS service, and I, the cost seemed to be significantly more than what I recall us paying to Mr. Bowles and Livable Communities or something like that. And then, the other vendor that was, did our GISing. So, I was, if you all can kind of bring me up to speed, that would really help me.
Would you like me to go? Okay. So, our 2022 contract with DRMP totaled $135,000, and in addition to that, we had Mr. Bowles for concurrency services engaged for $35,000 for a total of $170,000. This contract that's being proposed this year for 2023 is all-encompassing, and that's a total of $162,500. So, it's $7,500 less total. And then, there were other questions. I don't know if you want me to answer those right now?
Yes.
Okay. So, other information that I provided in the email, I talked about the previous contracts with DRMP. Besides the GIS services in those contracts, I had included district-wide rezoning assistance. There were, in both of those years, as well as this coming year, there's $85,000 of the 2022 contract remaining that hasn't been paid out, nor will that amount be paid out. There's still one more invoice to be paid, but it's not gonna be even close to that, because we didn't do any rezoning efforts. As well as the 2021 contract, we had $46,200 that was unexpended. So, so those services were not used. We, you know, basically have been planning for rezoning for a little while. This contract for 2023, again, includes a task to assist with those rezoning efforts. The concurrency service area changes that you were questioning, that is included in this contract under the concurrency management task, so that was kind of rolled in. And I also mentioned that I strongly recommend tackling concurrency service area changes after we do the planned rezoning, because that's, that's pretty much, it makes sense to do it that way. That was something that was recommended in the last year 2022 concurrency, Annual Concurrent Report. And, you know, so that, that basically will come before concurrency service area adjustments, if that makes sense.
It does. Thank you. Thank you. I had one other question, Ms. Nguyen. I'm not sure if it's for you or who it would be for, but there was something on here for something about field repair or maintenance, and...
Is that in, are you talking still about the DRMP contract?
Nope. It's, this is a different item that's on this bids review and all, and I was only asking you because of your role in facilities. And I am, I am looking for, anyone else see what I was talking about? Oh, here it is, I think. Okay, so, it's JSC Systems Labor and Materials to Repair Field Issues After New System Was Installed. Is that it, Citizens Field? It's JSC Systems. And they're doing something also at Materials for Intercom System at Sydney Lanier, so I'm not sure. I, I...
I'm not familiar with that, Mr. Rella.
It's on the purchased products, $12,500 to $49,999.
Bolander?
Oh, you. Mr. Bolander.
Good evening. I believe that's gonna be for intercom repairs for, at Eastside High School, Sydney Lanier.
In Alachua Elementary.
Yes.
Oh, okay. That description is not good. It said "field," F-I-E-L-D, so I, that's...
What they call field repairs is the wiring and all that that's in the ceiling that goes on, you know, to make the call buttons and the speakers and all that work. That's just their wording on it.
Okay, thank you. Y'all know I read my material, right? And I actually do email and try to call people beforehand when I, when I can. Okay. All right, is there, does anyone else have any questions? Okay, we're ready to vote. All in favor of approving our consent agenda as presented? Vote aye. Aye. Okay, motion passes 4-0. All right, so, let me, we will move right along. I have like, this, this agenda is like really long tonight, and I got a lot of pages. I should have numbered them. Okay. Yeah, and it's smaller, too, yes. So, our action items now, we have an employee case. Attorney Delaney, is that you?
Yes, ma'am.
I am, I am like wanting to like let the attorney do your job tonight. I'm sorry. Please forgive me.
Ma'am, Chair Certain, members of the board, Superintendent Andrew. Action Item 1 is an employee case. It's Case 202122-0071-24. This case was sent to DOA at the request of the employee. DOA is the Division of Administrative Hearings, and DOA supported the district's stance for termination. So, the superintendent is recommending termination of the employee effective Wednesday, February 8th, 2023.
Motion? So, some move. The second? Motion by Ms. McGraw, second by Ms. Abbott. Any callers? Anyone in the audience? Any citizen input in the audience? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes 4-0. So, the second action item is...
That one does have my name attached to it, Madam Chair. This is the Greenhouse Church lease of a portion of Duval property. The superintendent recommends the approval of the lease between the Greenhouse Church Incorporated and the school board of Alachua County.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Thank you. Motion by... Motion by, um, Ms. Abbott and second by Dr. McNeely. Is there any citizen input on the phone? Anyone by, um, any board discussion?
I do have a question.
You go ahead.
So I will, um, I'll start this way. Dr. McNeely, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, Attorney Delaney, um, I noticed that the church, greenhouse will have the facilities until January of 2024. And, um, eight AM until eight PM every day of the week. I didn't know we had that kind of space still there.
One room.
Beg your pardon?
Go ahead.
So I wasn't involved in the negotiation of this agreement, um, so I'm going to need to defer to who would...
Okay, so, um, Ms. Green can, can, um, tell you a little bit more about it. It's not the whole facility though, Dr. McNeely.
So Greater Duval was in that classroom that, um, Greenhouse is going in. And Greater Duval moved to the Clarence Kelly Center, so that opened up that classroom facility. So they'll be doing a tutoring program once a week. And Ms. Rocher is here too from Greenhouse if you have any questions for her as well. So they'll be in there once a week doing a tutoring session.
Thank you, Ms. Green. I did not know we had availability. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Ms. McGraw.
That, that was, uh, Madam Chair, my question, how many tenants that we have in Duval, uh, currently at this time?
Ms. Green, are you able to, Ms. Green can answer that, yes?
There are three, I believe, tenants. There is, um, Aces in Motion, there is Kids Count, and now we will have Greenhouse in there.
Let me just clarify, you said Greenhouse would be one time a week?
Yes, they're meeting once a week.
No, they're meeting every day at the...
I thought she...
They have the room every day because they're going to be storing materials in there. So if we did like a weekly thing, if we needed to use that space, they would have had to move their stuff out all the time. So we gave that room to them for the year to have that, um, tutoring program.
Is that, uh, Ms., I'm sorry, go ahead. I, I just want to make sure we have, we just have so many things we need to address in the district. I just don't want to make sure, um, our hands are tied if we needed to use Duval because is it...
Um, in the lease agreement, um, number McGraw, that it states that if the district needs something, that we give them ninety days notice, and that's with any of our facilities. So we, the, the, the...
I saw that in the lease, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Ms. Abbott?
Mine's just a technical question. It said the, the, uh, contract says it starts on January twenty-third, and so we're already at February seventh, so...
So, I'm sorry?
Speaking to Mike, please.
They started their program on the twenty-third, but it was after the seventeenth board meeting. So we brought the lease to the most recent board meeting, which is today. But they moved in on the twenty-third and started their program.
But what if it's not approved today?
Then they, I defer to someone else.
I didn't hear what you said. Um, it, it is important that we do have the signed agreements before the tenants move in and, um... So I, if I'm not mistaken, I'm, was Greenhouse like working with Kids Count, some of those students that were there? So they've already been tutoring students that attend Alachua County Public Schools in that building. They're now just leasing their own dedicated space instead of being in the rooms with kids' space, Kids Count, I mean. Um, so, any other discussion? So I, I was, I, I read the lease and I was really shocked. I was like, whoa, wait a minute, they paying less than Aces in Motion and anybody else, but they only have one room. So I kind of like adjusted it, so adjusted how I was thinking that they were getting something for, I was like, whoa, wait a minute. But it is just one room there, and the, all of the tenants that are in that building occupying it know that if the district should need the space, that it would come up. But right now, until there's some decisions made by this board, then it's kind of is providing, um, some additional revenue to defray the cost of operating that facility while it sits there. And there are other staff people that are there, like the McKinney Bento staff is there.
That's what I was trying to see when I, when I asked the question, we may have tenants, who else is in that building?
They're not considered, you know, because they're, they're district folks, so that's not considered tenants.
Right, I know that, but I'm just thinking, um, my mind is just on, we have so many issues in this district, um, that even with ninety days, um, we may need to do something sooner. I mean, I don't know if I agree with, with, with ninety at this time, because there are just so many needs. I don't know, and I want to tour Duval, um...
Thank you. There are, there's no other comment, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Aye. Dr. McNeely?
Aye.
You can vote against it, that's...
I'm, yeah, nay.
Okay, three, motion passes three one, thank you. Um, the next item is... Let me get my, my notes, my notes in place here. Yes, two constructions. You know what, if these were numbered, that would really help me. I may get them on myself. Nope, because I got notes all over mine. Thank you, though. Um, I see Ms. Nguyen there, I'm going to let you go ahead and go, and I'm going to catch up.
Hassan?
Yeah.
Hello again, Chair Certain, board members and Superintendent Andrew. This action item is for project SBAC G twenty-two oh one, the Hawthorne Middle High School Track Renovations. CHW Incorporated of Gainesville, Florida has prepared the design, excuse me, development, construction documents for the construction of this project. The recommended action is that the superintendent recommends that the school board approve these plans as presented. The fund source is one point five mil.
Is there a motion?
Oh, move.
Thank you, motion by Dr. McNeely, second by Ms. McGraw. Do we have any callers on the phone? Okay. Um, I do have one citizen input, Carly Simon. Dr. Carly Simon.
Good evening. Um, I am the newly elected, uh, PTO president for Shell Elementary and Hawthorne Middle High School. And I wanted to speak to this because we are excited about the financial investment in the facilities in Hawthorne. We think it is very much important, um, based on the fact that the state-winning records continue to come out of this community. I think this is a great investment. The thing that we would like to bring to your attention is that one of the things that the community has given me a lot of feedback on is that the school facilities for both Shell Elementary and Hawthorne Middle High are way below par and are not considered safe environments. And so one of the things that I'd like to just bring into your attention is that we want to have this track, but as we are dealing with other issues such as raw sewage, leaking roofs, that we really would like to have this looked at collectively. I think one of the big concerns is that the school has a absolutely gorgeous, uh, track and field, and they also have a facility that needs a six million dollar roof. And so my request and the request of the community is that this works in conjunction with that facility, whether it's the, um, Shell Elementary, Middle High moving together, or whether it's just Hawthorne Middle High, that we are looking at these two plans together. Um, once again, the request is a safe school. Uh, the community doesn't necessarily want a brand-new school, although that would be appreciated, but a safe school environment. It's also, as we all know, a constitutional requirement to have a safe and uniform public education system for our students. It's one of the most robust education clauses in the country, and so we would like to make sure that the district board remembers this. Um, on top of that, as a personal aside, I know that we have a huge rezoning that needs to take place. And as a taxpayer, as far as our schools that are over capacity, um, I'm pretty troubled if that would be what the priority would be, because we know that we need to have a rezoning. And so before we look at our facility plan and start thinking about, uh, capacity concerns, I would like the board to put safety concerns as a priority, because safe environments, like I said, are mandated, and we need to make sure our students are in healthy learning environments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any board discussion? Questions? So I, I actually reached out to Ms. Nguyen about this, and I just want to clarify. This is the design of the track that we've already paid for, is what you told me.
That is correct.
Okay. So if we approve this tonight, this is just CHW would go out, design, um, and we would just kind of hold the plans and, or it would come back to the board for a vote on a construction of the track?
The next steps would be for us to bid this as a task order. And then the task order comes back to the board for approval. And right now, we have it, uh, established that the rubberization, like we've done GHS, Buholdt, Santa Fe, is an ad alternate. So we have a price that's clear, what, what it costs for the rubberization, because that's something that the school is responsible for paying. Uh, the school has twenty thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-one cents they had allotted to put as a down payment. And then, uh, there's the balance that would be paid, and that repayment plan comes to the board as well.
So one of my other questions to you, just so my colleagues will know, because we can't talk outside of these spaces. Um, I had asked about where we stood with the Castalde, as well as the, looking at, um, what do we call it, refurbishing or rebuilding Hawthorne? However, it is, if, if it remains a junior, senior high, or if it's K-12, do you... And we don't have any movement on that yet, right? We don't have like a date certain for that or anything.
Uh, Castalde is with me, the draft, and it's, I'm reviewing that. It's a pretty hefty document to, to review. The project for Hawthorne remains to be seen. I feel like that's going to, that's going to be a part of our strategic planning process and redistricting, looking at our capital funds that are available. What are the priorities? What projects are we going forward with in terms of sales tax and one point five mil? So that's not a Suzanne win decision, that's a, a district-wide board decision, stakeholder engagement, in my opinion. Um, so this track is on a sep, a parcel separate from the school, so it's not part of that school campus where it's contiguous. You know, so we can go forward with bidding. You'll see this again when the bid comes back to you. The current principal of Hawthorne Middle High School is not absolutely sure that she wants to go forward with the rubberization. That's, you know, that's another reason we want to show her what the price is, what is the repayment plan. You know, she did, I guess, you know, there's other needs that the school has, so...
Yeah, but if the track is rubberized, I don't think that's a principal discussion. If the track is rubberized, the, the, that particular club raises the money and they repay it. That's what's happened at the other, other schools, is my understanding. It's not, the principal didn't decide, I mean, hopefully the principal would support it, I think.
Would agree.
Yeah, hopefully they would agree with it, but, but that's not like she didn't get to say, no, we don't get to go forward with that.
Absolutely, because when we were rubberizing the other schools, we brought all of the reasonings why it should be. Um, just think of the liability that you won't have if it's rubberized rather than asphalt. It's awful for students to have to go on the asphalt, period.
I think that her, now, I, I don't want to speak for her, but what I heard her say is the amount of the, of money, it's estimated to be about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the rubberization. I think she's concerned about the financial piece, so it, it...
So for me, I was concerned about us building the track and if we rebuild the school. I didn't want to have to tear one up to do, you know, tear, rebuild the track, make it new. And then we build the school and we have to tear the track up again, that's wasted money. So I, I, we have very limited resources, and we have to make sure that we're making good decisions about it. But at the same time, I understand the financial implications, and then we kind of get into an equity-type thing where the facility has just run down for so long, and if they don't have the money to, to, um, that booster club to, um, rebuild the track, I think we have to look at that, because as Dr., I was in the audience when GHS came in Santa Fe, and, you know, um, I, I, I just think that, I know the, the value of it, and I just think we have to look at it as a district and how we, how we go forward with that, so...
Yeah, and I think we have to prioritize this, just like I remember when I was serving before, Hawthorne was already moved up. I mean, I'm not going to get into that, but I know Hawthorne has to be a priority. And that track has been lacking for a long, long time. And I think, like she said, with equity, as Madam Chair has already said, to me, we need to, we need to move expeditiously as, as fast as we can when it comes to, to Hawthorne as well. Because, and there are people who will provide donations to help, and so we just need to facilitate those conversations.
So I'm hearing that...
So I think we have already rebid, I mean, you're going to go, um, have it designed, and then there is, there is a discussion that the board needs to have about facilities and the ordering and the prioritization of that. That's not something we can do tonight, but I guess you've told me on the phone that we've already paid for this service. It's not like, she's not voting, we're not voting for an invoice. This is, you know, for the design invoice, we've already paid for it, if I understood you correctly.
We've paid for the design, which is what this is. This is the construction documents that we can now take to bid as a task order. And once the task order process is complete, we'll bring the low bid, the low responsive, uh, bid to you, and that is something that's also approved by you.
Right, and then we can decide at that point. Hopefully, we would have had meetings and we can decide from going forward. So I'm, I'm sorry, just, okay, go ahead, Dr. McNeely.
Um, Mrs. Nguyen, is the track four lane, eight lanes, six lanes? What, what are we talking about?
That, I'm sorry, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Madam Chair, from a, from my memory, it's eight lane.
Eight lane?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I, for some reason, I was thinking it was six, but I wanted to make sure you got the correct...
Okay.
Mr. Andrew, would you turn your light off, because I was, I keep seeing it, and I'm thinking I need to call you. Thank you. And Ms. McGraw, you as well. Okay, thank you. Um, if there's no other discussion, all in favor? Aye. Okay, motion passes four zero.
So for clarification, I'm hearing you want me to go forward with our normal procedure of taking this to, to bid?
Yes, and we will decide at that, because there is no cost to bid.
That's correct. Thank you.
They didn't want to talk.
Thank you. All right. Okay, next up is Ms. Wise.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, as Ms. Ward mentioned during her ACEA announcements, we've been working together with their calendar committee to bring to you this evening the 2023-24 school calendar, and the superintendent recommends the board approve the calendar as presented.
A motion? Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. McGraw, second by Ms. Abbott. Um, any citizen input? Okay. Any board discussion? Was your item on six? You have six, and I can't read my number here, this is four. That's okay. I think four. So I have, um, there's no, if there's no citizen input, no board discussion. I actually had, I asked Ms. Wise, why did we start on Thursday? And it seems like late in the week. I know we can't start before the tenth, and I was hoping that we could have kept the UF and Santa Fe, um, spring break aligned, because we've gotten so much, I have anyway, positive feedback on the, the two dates, two breaks aligning now for people that work at our, the institutions here, having the kids out of school at the same time. So Ms. Wise, would you please tell us why that wasn't possible this year?
Sure. Um, in terms of why are we starting school on a Thursday, as you stated, uh, August tenth is the, the date that is set forth by the state that school may not begin before the tenth. And because of the, um, state assessment calendar, which has set aside the entire month of May for our end-of-year state assessment, um, we work really hard to get all of our instructional days in... we work really hard to get all of our instructional days in prior to that May assessment window. So, if we don't start by August the 10th, it makes it hard to get all of our school days in so that we ensure students have had the most opportunity for those precious instructional minutes before the end of the year testing. In terms of the alignment of spring breaks, and that was something that we piloted, and we did receive a lot of positive feedback around that, and we also got, as Ms. Ward mentioned, some more critical feedback, or, you know, different type of feedback, wanting our spring break to be later than the University of Florida. And I think the rub comes there is that our semester is quite a bit longer than the University of Florida semester. We have 18 weeks in our semester, and they used to have a 16-week semester, but now they have a 15-week semester. And so, they want their spring break in the middle of the semester, much like our educators do, which, for next year, put their spring break the week of March the 2nd. And so, for our students and educators, that isn't, that isn't the middle of our semester, and then makes that kind of trek from the end of spring break to the end of the year and state assessment, kind of a long, hard spell. So, we have placed spring break for next year in roughly the same week as it is this year, which did align, but is not going to align going forward for that reason.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Any board discussion? Questions? Any board discussion of questions?
It applies for tomorrow.
Okay, well, well...
I don't know how to...
Just leave it, leave it, because we have to adopt our calendar for going forward, and tomorrow's meeting, the workshop, there's no voting that happens in that. And we, there's a lot that has to be done to go for that. So, we have to go here unless we delay this two weeks, so...
Even if we can make an amendment later?
I'm sorry, Dr. McNeeley, I missed your question or your suggestion. I apologize.
I was making a statement, not really a question, but the chairman said we needed to go on, so then I asked if we can do an amendment, if something changes with our school's schedule.
Well, even with tomorrow, with what happens, any discussion that happens, in my view, in the workshop tomorrow?
Right, I'm not saying...
No, I'm saying that...
There will be no voting tomorrow.
No, 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 but I'm saying even if we decide as a group to go forward after Wednesday, that calendar, that particular model could not use this calendar.
That's why I'm saying, can there be an amendment?
It would be...
But it would be a totally separate calendar.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay.
Don't you hate, like, the, I'm not hate it, but you know, the sunshine, this is kind of like how we kind of have to do this, because we can't talk outside of here, so... All right, so is there any other discussion? Any questions? All right, so all in favor of adopting the school calendar as presented by our calendar committee? Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. All right, the school calendar, now I can respond to those emails.
And you feel free to send them my way, too. I have gotten really good at answering those questions.
All right, will do. They just want to know when the first day of school is going to be.
Right, and spring break, so they can make their plans.
Yep.
All right, so, would you like me to move on? I have, okay, so, I have next about seven waivers for your consideration this evening. I would like to say that normally, these would have come to you last spring. These are all of the waiver requests for our schools who have utilized the language in our collective bargaining agreement that allows them to write waivers to the traditional six-period day in our secondary schools specifically. Those waivers have to be discussed with the district. They have to be approved by each school SAC, and then they are presented to and approved by the ACEA Executive Board before coming to you. And that did not happen last spring. So, we are in the midst of our waiver request timeline for the 23-24 school year right now, and you should expect to see the waivers for next year, hopefully, by the first meeting in April. But this evening, I appreciate the opportunity to review for you the waivers that we have in place right now. And that first one is a waiver request for A. Quinn Jones. This waiver request has a seven-period day at A. Quinn Jones, with the teachers teaching five of seven periods, using one of their two planning periods for team planning. The superintendent recommends the board approve the waiver for A. Quinn Jones as presented.
Second?
All right, motion has been made by Ms. McGraw, second by Dr. McNeeley. Any, okay, anyone in the audience, citizen input? Seeing no citizen input, I promise you, I am going to keep pushing for us to have seven periods district-wide, if it's one of the last things I do. All in favor? Aye. Okay, motion passes four zero.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Surtin. The next one I have is a waiver request for Hawthorne Middle High School. This waiver is for a four-by-four block schedule, and this has been going on for many years at Hawthorne Middle High School. It's approved by both the SAC, the faculty, and the ACEA Board, and the superintendent recommends the board approve the waiver request for Hawthorne Middle High School as presented.
Thank you, the motion by Dr. McNeeley, second by Ms. McGraw. Any, okay, anyone in the, Dr. Simon?
Hi, Carson Simon again. So, as far as the block scheduling, my child actually really appreciates it. We enjoy it. There are some things that are concerns, and I'd like to bring them to the board's attention just so we make sure that we focus on it. So, first off, we have Board Policy 2215 program of instruction, and there's a requirement that music and arts shall be provided for elementary, middle, and then there's some secondary nuance associated with it. I appreciate, Principal Stanford has come in, and she's done a good job trying to actually do an inventory. She's been working with the Eastside Alumni Band, and we appreciate that support of really assessing what instrument she has. But what we have had for a while is, music education has been existing in a virtual world, and the students and the families are wanting to have this at their schools. We do not have an art program at this moment, and I think all of us can understand why not having music and art at our schools is a serious concern, and so I hope that we can have that attention. Additionally, one of the block scheduling concerns is it actually creates this other problem. So, the benefit of block scheduling is that students have the ability to earn quite a bit of credits as compared, like the argument of a seven-credit year. This would also, we now have, the additional ones with block. What we're running into, and what I'm hearing feedback is, is that the students have an abundance of courses. They have many classes, but what they're running into at graduation is the testing scores. And so, there was feedback that students weren't having that additional support in order to meet the graduation requirements, that they had more than enough credits, but that was one of the issues. And so, I think that this is something that as the PTO, we're going to look at ways to support this, but we also would like the board to focus on the, the ability to have these credits is quite helpful, but we are still running into additional needs with this, as well as, obviously, the diversity of courses that are being offered. Like, for example, instead of being an office aide, if we had art, children could actually be taking art classes and not running letters to teachers. So, if you guys could just help us out with this, we're going to do what we can as well within the community, but we would like to make sure that you know that we have policy that really requires we meet this obligation. Thank you.
I have a question for Mrs. Wise.
Yes, Dr. McNeeley.
Ms. Wise, since I heard the citizens state that there is no art or music, did I hear incorrectly?
No, ma'am.
I heard correctly?
You did.
Oh, my. Oh, my. So, are you, and we've had the block scheduling for a long time at Hawthorne High School, and the kids have not had that access?
So, I don't know exactly what year the, the music program specifically, but also art, no longer was part of the electives at the school. When master schedules are built and courses are offered, decisions are made at the, at the school site. And so, Ms. Rollo has brought this to the superintendent and staff's attention, and we've met about it, and we'll be working very closely with Mrs. Stanford to identify room in the, the master schedule to...
Great, you don't need to explain any further. You're saying that you have, Mrs. Rollo has brought it to the superintendent's attention now, or previous? Now, this superintendent here?
I'm aware of Ms. Stanford enlisting the support of Mrs. Rollo, and Mrs. Rollo enlisting the support of the superintendent and district staff to put that back in place.
Great, and the principal supports that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, last week, I met with Mrs. Rollo and answered to your question, Dr. McNeeley. And a little bit of history on Hawthorne, I worked out there for 16 years. As with the onset of standardized testing and, as we recollect, the FCAT, what we saw was shop go away, ag was reduced, eventually it was art. We had, we had robust art, as you remember, Dr. Gerald Poe, former Mayor Poe's father was the band instructor there, and we had an incredible marching band. And as times changed, population shifts, as we know, there was that decrease in student enrollment there. Now, we've seen an increase, it's on the rise. But it was during that time that those programs, when I was working out there, that we saw them fall off the course schedule. And a lot of it was the standardized testing, the demand for remedial reading and intensive math courses and doing that work. So, just a little bit of history, but they used to definitely be very strong and very robust.
They have an excellent ag program.
Yes, ma'am, you are correct.
I guess my concern has been, I remember coming on, and there was a staff member that was saying there was no art in music, and she's there, that's right, and I bought that. But I kept hearing, oh, it's numbers, and there's no demand, and what the staff person that works there said, you know, how do children know they don't like steak if all you ever give them is hamburger? So, that was one thing. And then we had an issue when you were at Eastside, Mr. Andrew, you probably recall this, where there was low numbers, I guess, on an IB art or music. It was something in the arts, and the families were just frantic, thinking that the district was going to cut that out. And even though it was just a few students in that class, it was still, you know, put on, put forth. So, I think just as a, as a organization, we have to make sure that our rural schools and, and the schools that have challenging, challenges in them, that we do pay extra attention to them. But I'm not going to even go on that one-mill route, but... So, all in favor of this waiver? I guess for me, what I'm trying to figure out is that, the, Ms. Wise, you might be able to answer this.
I had a comment, my light was...
Let me, let me ask this, ask her this. I'm sorry I missed you. With them having the block schedule and I, and having more space in the students, they have the space to do, if they need any remediation in reading and math, to get their test scores. Are, do you know, do you know if they're, if they're offering that? Because it, to me, if a student has not met their, the testing requirement for graduation, instead of being an office aide, that time is better spent in a course period. Like, the students here at the other high schools have just the six periods. They don't have any space in their schedule to get that remediation. Do you know how that's handled, or how you would advise the administration to move forward with that?
Yes, ma'am, and I don't know specifically every student's schedule and that a student aide is being an aide and has not met the assessment requirement for graduation. But Hawthorne does offer double-dosing in math and ELA, and sometimes specifically around, you know, ACT prep and things like that to help them earn their concordant scores. So, especially with some of the elective courses happening on A-Day or B-Day, it does provide students with opportunity to take more courses.
Thank you. Ms. McGraw?
Well, since we're talking about Hawthorne and the music, those things had come up. But the other thing is, too, we have kids right now that are aides, but are not doing well. They're kind of, you know, teachers are saying they're floating around. When we have kids that are failing and they're floating around, that's a concern for me. So, we have to look at this. So, while this has come up, these kids are not in class, they're being aides, or what you call interns, something like that, but they're, they're not doing well. And so, we need to look at that. We need to look at that as well. Thank you.
Any other discussion ready to vote? All in favor? Aye? Okay, thank you. So, that's the Hawthorne waiver. All right, Ms. Wise?
Yes, ma'am. Who are we on?
High Springs.
All right, thank you. I guess I got my, I'm feeling your pain with this, this schedule. For High Springs, thank you so much. So, the waiver for High Springs is asking to allow, as you know, High Springs is, Community School is unique, they're our K-8 center, and so, they are asking for a waiver to the contract language on the middle school side so that that, the middle school students are released on early Wednesday, the same as the elementary students, to allow for effective busing and cohesive scheduling, because they all ride the same buses. So, the superintendent recommends the board approve the waiver request for High Springs Community School as presented.
Motion? Second? Second? All right, motion by Ms. McGraw, second by Dr. McNeeley. You have any phones? Okay, anyone in the audience? So, that early dismissal has got to go.
Tomorrow, that's...
Early dismissal, we're discussing. So, there's no board discussion, all in favor? All right, okay. Nay? Okay, so...
There will be, after the workshop tomorrow, again, I ask, everything that we are deciding and voting purposely tonight, there, I'd like the public to know there could be some changes.
So, Dr. McNeeley, your point is well-taken. These waivers right here are for this current school year, where we're in now, 22-23, because they didn't come to us in the spring. Right, so the, yeah, for the upcoming school year, they'll come back at another day.
Okay, thank you.
May I speak?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Andrew.
So, this is what's really weird, is all of these waivers, and you have explained it, Ms. Wise, but we're voting on something. Why does our vote even matter? Because if we had all said, "No, we don't want the middle school to have early dismissal," it wouldn't have made any difference, because they've had it for half year. There's something wrong with this system here.
So, I agree with you partly. I had, we didn't get the waivers, and I asked Ms. Wise about them, because I'm used to them coming. Normally, they come in March or April. They come before school is out. It's in the spring of the year, and I was looking back, and I asked her about them. So, this is a deviation from our collective bargaining agreement, and it has to, in a sense, be already agreed upon by our bargaining team and the union prior to coming to the board. Now, I'm going to ask Attorney Delaney or Ms. Wise to tell me what happens if the board does not approve the waiver that's been agreed to by the two parties, because I don't know that answer myself.
Sure, and Ms. Wise may want to chime in, but I would say that the district would need to shift into gear to do things like come up with a transportation plan for High Springs to what is going to happen with those middle school students, because we would revert back to contract language, and we would need to be operating on contract language.
So, not just High Springs, I'm just talking about any of the waivers. So, if any waiver, if we decided to vote against it, they would just go back to their regular, like, say Hawthorne, for example, they go back to offering six periods or whatever, it's, but, you know, yeah.
We just got to make sure we get them from there, suppose.
Yeah, this is the first time that's happened since I've been on the board. Normally, they do come, and I was like reviewing something and didn't, I was like going through some stuff, and I didn't recall seeing them. I take out, try to throw out the previous year's document, if it's something that we get yearly, and then replace it with the current year. And when I was cleaning out my file, from all my paper that I save, that I read, I didn't, I was going to throw away the waivers, and I never could find these, and that's how I kind of discovered it. So, I thought it was important that we bring these back, just out of compliance, because I didn't want ACA coming back later and there being any, ugh, about it. So, I just thought it was best that we bring them back and vote on them. And so, don't be alarmed when you see them again in probably two months, right, Ms. Wise?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. I believe they are all working on similar waivers for this year. And again, I just want to say, they do normally come each spring at that same time, and I accept responsibility for them not coming last spring. We had some organizational changes and staffing changes and changes in responsibilities, and it got by me. So, I am taking... by me. So I am taking responsibility for those not coming before the board last spring.
Thank you. And the next item. So Ms., Ms. Green, did you get that vote down there for the minutes? Okay, thank you. All right. The next one?
So you'll really like this one. This is a waiver request from Abane Middle School to have their teachers teach six of seven periods a day to allow expanded elective options for their students. So the superintendent recommends the board approve the waiver request from Abane Middle School.
A motion?
Second.
No, I, I need a motion.
Some move.
All right. Okay, thank you. Motion by Ms. McGraw, second by Dr. McNeely. No phone calls? Anyone in the audience? Okay, any board discussion? All right. Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. This waiver request is for the Professional Academies Magnet at Lofton High School. They too have been on a four-by-four block schedule for quite some time and they would like to continue that. Superintendent recommends the board approve the waiver request for Lofton as presented.
A move.
So motion by Ms., Dr. McNeely, second by Ms. McGraw. Any discussion? Okay. But I do want to say, Ms. Wise, what I don't get, if we can do these waivers at one or two schools, why we can't just have like four-by-four block or have seven periods at all the schools? Secondary schools?
Because of current contract language. So the way that the collective bargaining agreement reads right now, if we're not doing a six-period day where teachers teach five 50-minute periods, we have to waive the contract language.
That schedule of contract time by district, have you, have you all finished with that yet for me?
Uh, no, ma'am, but we are working on it.
Okay, thank you. Any other board questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye? Okay.
All right. So we're going to wrap it up with the waiver request for Santa Fe High School. This waiver request puts time around the student lunch period to allow for power hour is a 25-minute time attached to lunch that teachers have the autonomy to decide to hold groups or to be available for office hours to provide students with additional instructional support. The waiver has been approved by the faculty, the SAC, and the ACA Executive Board. And the superintendent recommends the board approve the waiver for Santa Fe High School as presented.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. McGraw, second by Ms. Abbott. No calls? Anyone in the audience? Any citizens in the audience? Okay. Seeing none. Any board discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Wise, last year or was it two years ago, power hour, power hour, I can't even say H-O-U-R, was taken out of the program and now we have it back?
Yes, ma'am. I think it was a one-year hiatus and I believe it was two years ago. It has to do, because it has to pass all of those hurdles with the fa, the faculty, the SAC, the ACA Executive Board, and then on to you, if I remember to bring them.
So then apparently the staff and, and administration felt a need to bring it back because it was so great and helped the students.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye.
All right. Motion passes four zero. All right. We rocking and rolling along.
Thank you, Ms. Board Certain, Board Chair Certain. I'm going to give Ms. Wise a break on her voice and pick up this next group. So we have had an incredible amount of really good discussions relating to Camp Crystal going back at least a year and a half and had multiple workshops, most recently on January 11th. Got some really good feedback from the board and the community and camp staff and the course superintendent. And so today is kind of the culmination of that work as we prepare for summer camp in 2023. We do have three action items for the board to consider. The first is the proposed rate increases for summer camp 2023. For the one-week program, it would increase from 545 to 600. For the two-week program to 1,090 to 1,440 per, per week or for the two-week period. And then increasing the out-of-county fee from 75 to 100. The superintendent recommends the board approve the proposed summer camp tuition rates for 2023 as presented.
Is there a motion?
Move.
Second.
So move, motion by Ms. McGraw, second by Ms. Abbott. Any discussion? No callers? Let's hurry up. Any board discussion? I'm just kidding. No, we've gotten a lot of emails. I'm sure staff can imagine saying that this is coming late. But I just must say this. I've been like asking about this for a long, long time so that we wouldn't be notifying the public late. But at any rate, we're here and these changes were necess, they were necessary for a number of reasons. One, the cost of doing business has increased as well as the audit of our books by an external auditor. And one, thirdly, after an internal investigation reveals some things. So sometimes we have to make decisions and move forward with things that have been changed, things that have been done away for a certain, a long time. We have to make changes and that. And it's not entered into lightly. And this is, we're a long time coming. So all in favor of the price increases that have been recommended by staff and discussed by the board? Vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposers? Okay, so motion passes four zero. Mr. Rella?
Action item number 12 is the proposed increases to the summer program counselor pay. The current pay schedule is, starts at $200 per week and then increases by $25 per week, or per week based on the experience level. The proposed increase to the beginning summer pay for this coming summer, which we've discussed quite a bit in workshops, is increasing from 200 per week for year one counselor to 400. So pretty significant increase there. And then increasing by $25 increments based on the experience of the counselor. The superintendent recommends the board approve the proposed counselor pay for Camp Crystal as presented.
Is there a motion?
No moves.
Motion by Dr. McNeely, second by Ms. McGraw. Any?
Citizen input by phone?
Okay, anyone in the audience? All right. Any board discussion?
Any additional board discussion?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Okay. I'm not sure if it's going to be you, Mr. Rella or Ms. Wise.
Well, he's handing it back to me. So it is with great pleasure that after the feedback that we've gotten from you from several workshops and working closely with camp staff, we have for you this evening a draft of the summer camp handbook. It lays out very specifically the things that you've already approved with the, the fees. But it also delineates very clearly the scholarship program and the scholarship selection process, as well as some changes that you made to the weighted selection process for being assigned to camp this summer. The superintendent recommends approval of the Camp Crystal Summer Camp Handbook as presented.
Some move.
Second.
Move by Ms. McGraw, second by Ms. Abbott. Any callers? Okay, any citizen input? So any, no citizen input, we'll bring it back to the board. Thank you all, Ms. Wise and those for incorporating this. Again, this is something that we had, it just took a long time to come back to us as a board, but was indeed needed. And I guess since this is a departure, a change in departure, when we get an internal auditor in, this is a change and this is something that does need, we trust everybody, but we just verify to make sure that the policies and the board and things are followed as laid out. So there's no other discussions or, yes, sir? Yes, ma'am?
Um, when will the campers be notified of their placement? Is, do we know that date or?
So I'm not sure if we have that date for camper notification yet, but I can get that information to you.
And I'm only asking because I've had several parents complaining because EDEP registration is due soon and there, they need to know their placement at summer camp in order to know what to register for, for EDEP. So if there's anything that we can do to help them with that process, I think that would be great since they say that they're, you know, this is something new and, and they need.
Yes, ma'am. And we do know that that timeline is tight. In fact, the Scholarship Committee is going to be meeting soon. But Mr. Strack is here from Camp Crystal and I think if he would be willing to come to the podium, he might be able to help us a little bit understand that timeline. Thank you, Mr. Strack.
Press the button? Can you hear me? Hi, I'm Landon. I work at Camp Crystal Lake. To be able to answer your question right now, one of the things that we've been waiting on is kind of the direction of the board, making sure that we have things in place. That is the next thing that we are going to be working on with fees being changed, things like that. When people are signed up and they receive their piece, their part for the session that they're going to be in, that is when their account through Camp Minder actually gets billed. So one works well with the other. They can't be placed without the price. Now that we know the price, it's been voted on, that's what we just decided. That's the next part that comes up.
Thank you. And I'm going to repeat, as a board member, I've been trying to move this ball up the field to score a touchdown. And it was very slow in getting information for us to get to this point. So the board was really trying to move so that we would not be in this spot. I'm saying this for the community because folks watch our meeting, I'm told. But these, these changes, and we've gotten a lot of emails as well about the changes as a board that we've made about the out-of-county not being prioritized. And that change was necessitated because this camp is subsidized by the taxpayers of Alachua County. And in my view, and my colleagues discuss, expressed that same sentiment that campers within the county should have, should get a seat before we offer seats to residents that don't pay taxes in our county. And so that's where we are with that. Is there any other board discussion or comments? Okay, seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Okay, motion passes four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. And nice meeting you, Mr. Trask. Strack. Strack. All right. Nice meeting you. All right. See, Dr. Volker's already at the podium. Turned it off. Yeah, there you go.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. I am bringing action item number 14, an ESER amendment to the board for consideration for submission to the Florida Department of Education. So this amendment is from our ESER fund, which is the Emergency and Secondary School Emergency Release, I'm sorry, Elementary and Secondary. It was established to provide, provide aid to districts to safely reopen and sustain operations during the COVID-19 pandemic. In March 2021, a third round of funding was added to the ESER fund, the ARP ESER, through the enactment of the American Rescue Plan Act. So in January 2022, the district developed plans for the intended use of our allocated ARP funds totaling over $61 million, which were submitted to and approved by the Florida Department of Education. Any amendments to the original grant require approval by the Florida Department of Ed. I attach, I present to you our proposed amendment number five to the district's ARP award. The proposed amendment represents the request from various department leaders and includes an increase in the district's ARP allocation of $9,637. The, I present the amendment for the board's review as suggested by the superintendent.
All right. Can I get a motion?
Some move.
All right. Any citizen input? Any calls? No calls? Anyone in the audience that want our citizens in the room that like to comment on this before we bring it back to the board? Okay, seeing none. I'll start with Dr. McNeely.
Beg your pardon.
You have any comments or questions?
Well, Dr. Volker, with the amount that's listed here, what's the ballpark figure for balancing?
I'm sorry.
What's the, what's the balance? B-A-L-A-N-C-E. What's left?
What's unspent?
Yes, ma'am.
Our ARP ESER. I'm going to have to defer to Mr. Rella to see if he knows that off the top of his head.
So great question. I'm actually going through our presentation from January, which would be the most recent update to the board. So give me one more.
Give me that again. That's okay. I'll see you tomorrow.
All right. So for the original ESER, this is what we call the American Rescue Plan ARP allocation. We have roughly, or at least as of the end of December, when we were running reports and, and providing updates to the board, around 34 million in balance.
I'd just like to hear the digit of million with, okay. I didn't say in 31, but 34.
Estimated as of December now.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
To keep in mind, obviously this grant runs through September 2024. So that 34 million is not just for this year, it's also for next year.
I know. I, I, I know. And I understand reoccurring. Okay, got it.
Anybody else?
Nay.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Um, I'd like to know why we're paying retention bonuses to SciTech.
We're the pass-through, I think probably.
Exactly. We are, I.
We're the pass-through, just like our, the Title I money comes to the district and it goes through. The charter schools, their ARP, their ESER, all of that money came to us and it was passed through from.
They had their own allocation. Each charter school is entitled to an allocation and they had that. So with their allocation, they want to change their usage of some of their funding to provide retention bonuses, which.
So if it wasn't in their original application or whatever, they have to come back through the district in order to change that?
Correct. And it has to go through this amendment process, be approved by Florida DOE before they can grant those, before they can issue those. Yes, ma'am.
And then I have another question. So with these, with this ESER funding, is it possible to provide scholarships to a summer camp? Because it does say summer enrichment, social, emotional, academic needs for underrepresented groups. So could some of the ESER funding be used to provide scholarships to Camp Crystal?
Absolutely. And as we discussed, I think it was in the last board workshop when we presented all of the additional ESER funding that we have received. So there were those smaller additional sub-grants that we received, like for summer learning camps, extended weekends. Those actually already have scholarships built into them for EDEP, for the extended school year programming, and also for some of our community partnerships. So yes, ma'am.
Because we only have like eight scholarships.
That's a good idea. I mean, I'm. Eight scholarships that were funded by, well, well, if, based on donations, correct. Correct. They were estimating. We don't have eight on hand right now, is my understanding. We don't have eight, we don't have donations from citizens for scholarships on hand right now. They're anticipating what they've got. They were, that's based on what they've gotten in the past. Please.
I could clarify there, there was some residual leftover from last year as well. So it's kind of, you know, what was residual leftover plus what we estimate for this year. I think that's a really interesting idea. I'm, I'm not sure if we can call the DOE. I think one thing they might want to see is a little bit more educational aspect of it, of the camp and it, what that looks like in the summer. It's not real intensive on educational programming. So I think there would be, but there certainly is some. So I think that would be something for us that we can reach out to DOE and kind of just hypothetically, if we wanted to do this, here's the programming, here's what we do. But that is a good idea. That could be an opportunity to kind of expand because I think we are only looking at potentially eight scholarships down from 40-something. So that's going to limit some opportunities.
Yeah, because the whole purpose of making a lot of these changes was so that we could reach more of Alachua County students. We've just raised our prices. And I feel like with eight scholarships, we're, we're, we're barely reaching a lot of the kids that we're trying to reach. So anyhow.
That's a very good point. And we also, the 40, 40-plus scholarships before, they were funding, funding the scholarship fund with out-of-county fees, which was, in my view, not the right way to fund them. So that's the only reason why we had, we were able to award so many scholarships in the past.
And I'm just saying, if, you know, I, I see ESER funding being spent on things that, that might have a great impact on kids and some things that I don't think will have a great impact at all, in my personal opinion. And so I'm just saying, if we could, if we could put 10 more kids at Camp Crystal, I think that's awesome. And, and it's a small amount of that ESER funding and I think it does a lot of good. For some of those kids, it would make a huge difference. And so.
Well, the grant increase, she said like 9,000 and some change, right?
Ma'am.
An additional amount of funding. So I don't know, you, they, maybe that's something they would have to work on and bring, they could work on and bring back an amendment for that, since that was $9,000 we didn't have originally. they could work on and bring back an amendment for that, since that was $9,000 we didn't have originally. So do you have anything else, Ms. Abbott? Because I have a lot of questions and so I said earlier, I didn't get to, if anyone responded to my email, I didn't get any responses. But the concerns that I have about the amendment is that I see a lot more things that are reoccurring expenditures for the district being placed on here. That's one thing. Some administrative positions. And then there's some things in here that I am, like, they're time-limited positions to do things that I thought we already had people on staff for, namely, it's something to do with truancy. And I'm trying, we have family liaison specialists that I was told that was being funded out of here that we've read and what their duty would be. And then we have a couple of positions in here now that are being proposed to help with truancy. That's one concern that I have. And then we have the beyond-the-bell virtual therapeutic intervention. And Ms. Wise, I don't know who, I mean, Dr. Edwards, you can tell me, is this gonna be, we're just paying people even if no students show up, much like we did with beyond-the-bell tutoring, the academic tutoring? I got some concerns about that. The teachers on special assignment, the behavior time, behavior assignment, that, I got concerns about that. So I guess, you know, my email that I sent to you, I'm not sure if you've had a chance to read your email, but help me with this because I don't want us just, my concern is we're spending money on a lot of things and we have not tied the spend to outcomes and how we're gonna be able to sustain it afterwards. And it is an incredible amount of money, it seems like, you know, upfront. But what I don't want to happen is we get to 2024, not just with our school district, but because I sit here, I have to say this about our district, is that our students are no better off than they were at the start of the pandemic and when we got all this flush of money. And I am seriously concerned that as an organization, we're not giving thought to how we're spending this money. So I don't know who wants to help reassure me of that or if the motion would be, I mean, another motion that we, or ask for a motion that we table this until we can get a little bit more clarity before we send this off.
Yes, ma'am, and I think if additional time is necessary with staff, it would certainly be helpful in terms of looking at effective evaluations. But to answer, this is like very loud. So to answer the questions for the positions that you just mentioned, however, there are two positions that are listed there as, and the title there says Engagement Officers. The positions within the districts are Attendance Officers. The terminology was changed within the ESER amendment because it's in alignment with what the national information says about what attendance officers do, and changing it into more of an affirmative language. But the position is really that of Attendance Officers. Currently, our school district only has one Attendance Officer for the entire district. The role of the Attendance Officer is different than that of the family liaisons. The family liaisons that were assigned to the schools are assigned to serve as that person who really makes connection between the family and making the phone calls may do home visits and have other supports that are in place for the individual school. However, with a district Attendance Officer, they have responsibilities related to truancy court, attending SARB meetings, making sure that those truancy letters go out and are the point person between the district and the requirements for truancy in the state. And that's not the same role as the family liaisons.
Can I stop you? So I wasn't equating the two. If my email, I said they were at each school liaison and I thought collaborating, doing what the one agent couldn't do. You know, because it's more work, data, data in the school staff, so. And I didn't really, I thought we had two truancy or attendance engagement?
Not longer, we currently, we have one.
Okay. So I guess then my next question is if this, that position we know is very critical and we have it on the grant now, what's the plan going forward and going forward to sustain it? You know, I know attendance is an issue at a lot of schools, but I'm not seeing any evidence of individual schools other than one of the SI schools to me that's really presented a plan with how they're monitoring and following up on, because that's the one school I go to now, okay? So, but how they're following up on their students that are not attending school and...
Madam Chair, I think we need to table this there because now that I've been, all of us have been working on our strategic visioning, we're learning a lot more. And so when it comes to those Engagement Officers and the difference as far as family liaisons, this information as far as how we're spending, we need to table this. And so I would make a motion to table it.
All right, is there a second to table this?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of tabling this motion until the meeting, the next meeting, which that date is, I don't have, February 17th or something like that? February 21st, all in favor of tabling this? Okay, aye? Okay, aye. Motion passes four to zero. Thank you, Dr. Volker. So, Dr., I'm sorry, Ms. McGraw made the motion. Ms. Abbott seconded it, and okay. So, and just for staff, I can't speak for my colleagues, but I thank you all for getting us the amendment prior to sending it to DOE because that hasn't always happened since I've been sitting on the Board. But in the, for me, I need a little bit, I need a little bit more, I need more information on really how we're, what's the goal of the spend? Like the things I outlined in the email. And I guess I was just, I was disappointed that there wasn't any more information in there, you know, like about usage and stuff because ever since we started ESER, I've been asking for us to really to make sure that we have set out criteria on how we're gonna monitor the spends on the money so that you all could report back to the Board if what we're doing is effective and if it isn't and we need to pivot, we need to pivot. We don't need to go a whole school year spending in ordinate amounts of money and not directly impacting our students in a positive way. So I appreciate it coming before, prior to now and maybe Mr. Andrew, not maybe, Mr. Andrew, I would really hope, or I expect that you would give guidance to your staff to do some of that evaluation so that they could report out to the Board and we'll be in a better position to vote on this for approval to send to DOE in two weeks when the item comes back to the Board. Okay. That's that. So the next item is our Contract for Strategic Planning.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Contract for Strategic Planning. We've brought to you the RFP there for your review and is recommended with the highest rated and lowest cost. The Superintendent recommends that the Contract for Strategic Planning Consulting Services be awarded to Cognia.
Can I get a motion?
A move.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Dr. McNeely, second by Ms. Abbott. Do we have any phone calls? Okay, anyone in the audience? Board discussion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. McGraw.
In reading about Cognia, I know one of the biggest things I want to make sure of with the strategic planning, focus on equity, and then reading on page 27 when it talks about using a gap analysis to identify unmet needs, I want to make sure when we're looking at that, I guess of the Superintendent, what professional development support that teachers and administrators really need. Because we know we have a gap and we gotta make sure we are bringing about positive outcomes for these children. So when I was reading that, I wanna make sure. I mean, I know the, I even called to check other districts or others, they have helped and they have been successful. However, we gotta make sure here we're being effective, but this really stood out to me. And I want to make sure there's a focus on equity throughout, but also when we're using that gap analysis, want to make sure we're supporting what professional development is really needed to support these teachers and administrators to make sure we're being effective and our students are improving. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. McGraw. Ms. Abbott?
Could you just briefly go over how all of this came about? Because I know it was a year or so ago, the whole bid system and how they were, how that process came about.
So there's been quite a bit of discussion for quite some time now from the Board on strategic planning. And we put together a bid when working on, well, first we worked on ESER, right? And we were looking at what we needed to do district-wide, as you've seen with the ESER amendments this evening. So the initial ESER plan back in, I'd say, January of 2022, we came up with areas where we needed to do the work. And one of the areas was strategic planning tied to rezoning. There'd been a lot of discussion about the equity plan as well. And so that started that discussion. And then we put it out for an RFP. And the RFP came back. And that probably came back in March or so, and I think is the date on this one. And as was mentioned earlier, you know, we went through some changes and some transitions within the school district with a new Board coming up in November. It was decided we should probably table things, wait, not bring it to the Board until we have a Board to provide us with direction that was gonna be sitting rather than get the direction from an outgoing Board at the time. So hence, we arrived here. And a lot of the work we want done is, it's kind of a collaboration piece where they will work with us on this. What you see in here, when we meet with the facilitator, will be adjusted, tweaked for our needs and interests and they will meet with various interest groups throughout the district with employees, a variety of employees to really collect the, what we need. And that includes all departments, the Equity Department, Student Services, everything across the board there. So there was a piece in there, I think you'll see. Things are negotiated once it's awarded. There's a piece in there, I think $40,800 that discusses district-wide, like the district. Now, let's shift to accreditation. You know how we have every high school accredited to issue high school diplomas to our graduating seniors? There's a piece in there that had the accreditation piece where the district is a member and the, I think it's 34 schools would be a member. That's for $40,800 in there. That's one of those things that as we negotiate, that piece could come out. So in all actuality, I could see this dropping down below $100,000, just around $98,000. I think I'd thrown some numbers together earlier, $97,500 roughly because with discussions with staff, we don't think we're gonna go with this district-wide accreditation piece. So that's kind of the process on how we got here. And we did, when we did the RFP process, we had a veteran team of administrators, former principals, district staff on that team. And when that came back, you know, not only was it the highest rated, it was also, you know, the low bid. And so for that reason, we recommend that we move forward with this. And again, in answer to Ms. McGraw, a lot of the specifics and the details will be worked out later with Cognia, not at this time. And the proposal as we see it can be adjusted as we move forward.
And so even though it's been a period of time, a year or more since this was received, it's still valid. And I know at one point there was a lot of controversy attached to Cognia. And so I just want to make sure, Mr. Delaney, that we're, this is something that we can move forward with.
And that's a great question, and Mr. Delaney can jump in. But that's a great question when it comes to RFPs. If we think about other RFPs that sometimes we see, and not all RFPs are the same, but oftentimes there's RFPs that are awarded that go out four or five years perhaps. Let's say when you look at the Federal Aviation Awards and stuff like that, oftentimes an awarded RFP goes out five years before it's actually hits the road and the rubber hits the road and the action starts. So my understanding from everything that we've researched with our purchasing department was that we're on solid ground.
Yes, ma'am, that's my understanding as well.
Yep, police report filed and all. No criminal, nothing criminal is wrong. Board policy was followed, state laws were followed. But I do would like, I would like to see the contract before we sign it. Or will it be a district contract or is it gonna be something that Cognia submits to us?
So it's gonna be a contract that we work on with them after this is approved with the Board.
So before you commit us, I want to make sure that there is an exit out, an exit agreement or some way for us to come out of things because we've signed one of those since I've been on the Board, staff did, that did not have that. So not with you, but I'm just saying. So that's why I was asking if it was the form that Mr. Garcia knows have, that's I think that's the standard document that the district processes their contracts with vendors on, where there is that way for us to come out of contracts. If somebody doesn't perform with some, for some reason, whatever, we can give notice. But we had a real estate services contract where there was not a way for us to exit out of that. And so as much as I know that we need to move forward with strategic planning because we don't have a document that is guiding our organization, directing our resources, you know, both financial and human capital, you know, having goals that we're working towards. I too wanted to make sure that everything was done in order, but I also want to make sure that if we get down the road with something and it's not going favorably, that we're not stuck in something until it sunsets, the contract ends.
Yes, ma'am.
You get burnt one time, you just learn to ask a whole lot of questions going forward, so. Any other Board discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye? Okay, motion passes four to zero. So we're back now at citizen input. I don't have, Ms. Johnson, are there any other sheets you have? Okay.
Carly Simon, this time I'm speaking as the former Superintendent and I'm speaking to the strategic planning. The, how this came about was we knew that we needed a strategic plan and we had discussions. As Superintendent Andrew has pointed out, we have a relationship with Cognia. We used Cognia to help us with accreditation for our high schools. We had discussions. They shared that they do strategic planning. We were interested and we were having communication with them. In this process, I realized that we needed to actually go through their whole procurement process. I worked with Mr. Rela. Mr. Rela started it up. Jeff Garcia went through the entire process and followed it to a T. I was terminated, I believe, the day before that the bids were actually due. The entire bid evaluation process occurred when I was no longer Superintendent, where there would be no benefit to me. I do not have any connections with Cognia in any form of a financial level. And there has been controversy. And that controversy has been through political officials, those who won candidacies and those who've lost them, including one of them who actually went to the police and filed a report as though somehow this process was not done well. I stand by how this situation was handled, including how the situation with Camp Crystal was also handled, which I have noticed many meetings addressing the concerns that I brought to the Board. It's been a year of processes. The work is important, it needs to be done, and it doesn't cost $20,000 to do a good job on this work. Thank you.
Any other citizen input? On that item? Actually, I see Mr. Galloway in the audience. Would you go to the podium? I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Galloway is a student at Gainesville High. I wanted to get a shirt from you for the Black History thing. I don't know if I'll be able to make the celebration, but do you still have T-shirts for sale for that program?
Yes, ma'am. Black History month T-shirts are $12.
Okay. Would you please stay after the meeting is done, the conclusion, so I can pay you for that? And then if I don't get there, you can just ask the office staff to send it to the district office for me by truck, okay? It's a nice shirt. It's a nice shirt. Yeah, I have. Okay. All right, any, we don't have any other citizen input? That was citizen input. I'm getting ready now to go to Board and Superintendent requests.
I want to do that. I want to recognize the CEO of the Children's Trust. I'm sorry.
My mic is not on. I want to recognize the CEO of the Children's Trust for Alachua County. I want to recognize the CEO of the Children's Trust for Alachua County Public Schools, Mrs. Marcia Keiner, who is here with us tonight.
Executive Director.
I'm sorry. What did I say?
CEO.
Well, that's what I call her.
Good evening, everyone. And thank you, Dr. McNeely, for welcoming me. I, this is my first opportunity to greet all of you. I will be coming to hopefully many of your meetings in the future. It is a pleasure to be back in my hometown. I am a proud product of Alachua County Schools, having attended Alachua Elementary, Williams Elementary, Lincoln Middle School, and a proud Bu host, Bob Cat. So again, just happy to be here, looking forward to working with all of you on behalf of the trust and the work that we all do on behalf of all of our children here in the county. Thank you.
I was going to recognize.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Madam Chair. That's right.
We're, we're used to you, McNeely. That's okay. We're now at board member and superintendent requests. You all have any requests? Yes, Ms. McGraw?
Thank you. I want to follow up on the high-dose tutoring, that information. Well, I don't know if that's coming tomorrow or the next meeting, but remember, I asked that question before. And also had a question about SAC. Now, I remember when we were dealing with the Parker situation. SAC committees, and I'm not sure in state statute, are they supposed to meet at a certain time? I was noticing, I was reading information about the waiver. I saw SAC, some people meeting 7:15 a.m., 12 noon, 4:30, 5:30. I didn't know if there was a set time, so that we can make sure. Or are we offering virtual opportunities sometime to make sure parents can attend?
So meetings are supposed to be noticed? I don't, I don't think in the statute it tells you when the meetings have to be. But they, they do have to have the meetings and they are public, like open to the public? Have to be held in the sunshine?
I just want to make sure we're, you know, because some parents, you know, had, you know, reached out. And at 7:15 a.m., a lot of parents paying to go to work. I did notice as I was reading, and then one of the parents reached out. And I just wanted to make sure how are we providing opportunities? It may not always be in person. Are we doing virtual? I'm just saying, we want to make sure we are allowing opportunities for all parents to be able to attend those. Because SAC committees are important. There's a lot of information that goes on in those meetings, but some parents can't reach, you know, 7:15 a.m. I just noticed, and when I received the call, so.
Thank you. So your request would be for Mr. Andrew to?
Well, maybe just, you know, I don't, I don't know. I didn't know if there was a set time, but maybe we can encourage our?
So Mr. Andrew would, would make the request or the announcement to the school communities that they would offer options, virtual and in-person options, in, you know, different times to be more inclusive? Okay. That was it? Ms. Abbott, did you have anything?
No.
Okay, Dr. McNeely?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Of course you did. Yes, ma'am.
I have had the pleasure for the past two days to be with a department that we certainly need to have intact, and that's Mr. Darren Jones's Department of Transportation. Truly, colleagues, it was an eye-opener for two full days. We are scheduled for February the 20th, 21st, March 3rd, March 7th, and March 8th for continuation. There are a lot of great things happening or will happen if we can get everyone on the same page, our colleagues to vote in certain ways. But I'm here to tell you, there's much to be done. And I'm looking at Mr. Shellnut, because we had a discussion before our board meeting started, and he's such a kind gentleman. Again, I apologize to you. But I want my colleagues, and although I said just before you hit the gavel, Mrs. McGraw had stated some bus that she was going to ride on. But these are the buses that write them down. I want you to look at 3009, 3055, 3015. Those are all picking up Rollins, Kanapaha, 1017, 1013, 3015, Hittenoke, 2011. These are some of the toughest buses that we have.
Okay, so?
Some of the things that I learned, I guess I'll be riding a lot, because it's not going to happen while I'm on the bus. And I'm hoping that my colleagues will say the same. I'm hoping that district staff may have written some numbers down as well. We must help the employees who transport these kids and who have to watch the traffic, drive, and make it home safely or pick them up. Let me go back one page, Madam Chair. They have a lot on them. It's not just the people who drive the bus, but it's the people who take the calls in dispatch, the people that make determinations where the buses will go, how they will get home. It's unbelievable what the people in that department have to do. Their statement is, when you ask, what is your role? Transporting our students to school and home in a safe and timely manner. I don't care who you ask out there at the compound. They will roll that off. And I truly feel between the mechanics, the lead managers, I'm probably missing some of other folk who work in the department. It's unbelievable. And I'm hoping that our leadership and the board will continue to support the employees. We need to support every employee in Alachua County. Everyone, please hear me out, public, the public and citizens. It's not just where I've spent two full days and have committed to spend five more days with those employees. It's incredible. And I was so overwhelmed that when I was speaking to the superintendent's folk in their office, they didn't give me any chocolate tonight, because I've been pretty rough. And I, I, I'm just saying, that's how critical it is. And I don't know how they make it. I really don't. I want each of us to ride. I hope other personnel in here will ride and come back and have an open discussion. Our meetings have to be noticed. I was told by my chairperson, when you notice all these meetings, it's an expense. But I'm here to tell you, if I have to pay for the workshop for us to come back to discuss it, guess what? I'll find a credit card.
She didn't, I didn't see it just like?
Well, explain yourself, Madam Chair, because that's what I felt. Because I said, as many meetings as we need to have, and the attorney is looking at me, the meetings have to be noticed. Anytime we all come together. And what I saw, I can't really say to these three ladies.
You can report now. You can, I mean, you can share some stuff now, because we're?
Oh, I'm not going to do it, because we got to go see Biden. But, but I'm here to tell you that we've got to have this discussion.
I'm going to ride 3055.
All right, but ride what you want to ride, but ride one of these other ones, too.
Don't worry. Okay.
I just, I just had to say that.
No, and Dr. McNeely, I, I actually, I'm not, I'm not minimizing what you, what the, the situation in transportation, what you say. I've actually ridden as well, you know, when they've had the ride-along week. I don't know what they call it, but I've gone, you know, the two years before COVID. And so I, I will take you up on that and?
And, 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 Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Other words, because I have ridden, I rode all day from Littlewood out to the rural area and back, all kind of places. But I was riding with the bus driver who had never missed a day in all his 30 years. And they said, but you rode on the best bus in? So that doesn't count. That doesn't count.
Yeah. Okay, so your, your, your request of us kind of leads into my request. Because we, you're right, we do have some challenges in our transportation department, not just with staffing, but with cost as well. And I actually, I've got a couple, couple requests that I'm going to ask us as a board to agree upon when we pass them on to, to Mr. Andrew for, for this. But, you know, with the magnet application closing February 14th, and magnets are such a big part of transportation, you know, because we provide that. But we, as I've said before, we've had staffing issues, you're saying, and then we've had the issues. We are not providing a high level of service district-wide to any of our, most of our students. And so we need transportation to come to the board with something. I've said this to Mr. Jones, but I can't direct staff. So I am asking and that, you know, we're going to have to look at everything in our transportation department. Not just transportation, but since that's what we're talking about. You know, the staffing, the financial impact, you know, the, the trust that parents have in the system. I was in school early in the week, and it was said that the parents, some days don't, they know the days that the drivers call in, you know, like before holidays or on Fridays or before paydays or something like that. So they don't send their kids to school on those days, because they don't have transportation to get the children home. They think the kids may be at the school more than 90 minutes or so. That's disturbing. So we, we cannot open up in school in August, again, the same with what we're doing now. It's not sufficient. So I understand, you know, some people, there have been a lot of cans kicked down the road, and this is my commentary, and people not wanting to make a decision, but we have to make a decision. So I'm going to make a motion that we direct Mr. Andrew to work with Mr. Jones, and they come back to the board with some recommendations on some policy changes. We can't just say, oh, is it going to be some staffing or whatever? But they, they come back to us with something that where we have to consider. There are a lot of things we have to consider. It may be that we limit or eliminate magnet transportation. He does, Mr. Jones doesn't need our approval to rearrange routes and things of that nature. That's an operational issue. He can do that himself. Routes don't come to the board. But changes as far as decreasing our service level for optional things, we, we, by law, I don't know the statute, Mr. Rela or Mr. Delaney can tell us the statute, but there are children that we have to transport.
Oh, I know. I know.
Our first obligation to them as a, is to those children. Magnet is another layer. So, so I'm going to ask that you support my motion that we direct Mr. Andrew to, they, they come back to us with some proposals. And it not just be meeting one off with you. I'm glad that they have, have wanted to share with you. They wanted to share with me, but my schedule just, that hasn't permitted. And I was going to have them come to our next workshop next week, or workshop, a special workshop, but they weren't available. So this need, we need action on this, and it can't just keep getting pushed out and out. So I'm, the chair can't make a motion, so I need one of y'all to make that, and we vote on it.
I'd like to make that motion, Madam Chair, that we ask Mr. Andrew if he would please get with Mr. Jones and come up with some solid, there are some, I know there are.
So we direct, we're directing?
Solid ideas with the Director of Transportation, and then be able to come back and share that information. Is that correct?
We're directing, we ain't asking. I'm sorry, I ain't trying to be funny, but I, because I don't want it to sound like it's optional, because this got to?
Oh, I'm not, I, I never say anything optional.
Okay, okay. So can somebody suck in that? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you. So that's my first request. My second request is that we immediately consider rezoning the elementary schools. And originally, when I talked with you all in our strategic plan, I had, I'm sorry, our board orientation, I thought of us waiting and doing it all district-wide to go forth. And we start the school year August of 2024. But the elementary level needs to be, because this feeds into the facilities discussion and all this other stuff. So?
So you took my thunder for tomorrow?
No, I didn't take your thunder, because this is going to be, this, whatever we discuss tomorrow is just a discussion between us and what we'll have.
Yes, ma'am.
But we still need staff, and we need, we, we need Mr. Andrew to, to do that. I mean, as, as the board chair, I can create committees. I can do that, but I can't direct the staff. So I, I need one of y'all to make a motion that we would direct our superintendent to, we assemble and we start to immediately address rezoning at the elementary level.
And why are you requesting that?
Because the elementary school rezoning, we need to change that. There are some schools that are severely overpopulated. We have schools that are under-enrolled. We have this rezoning, that, that population, all that transportation is impacting, impacted by certain things. So we, we need to, we need to help trans, this is all feeding in together. So we can't look at one will, I think, and not look at the other. But I think, we can't do the whole district right now, but I think we can do elementary school before the start of August of 2023.
I just think the public needed to know. But some, I think we need to let them know why we want to, you know, consider that.
I agree with you. Thank you. Who was second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So, and the next thing is, I have been, state law requires us, when our budget hits $500 million, to have an internal auditor. And we didn't have a job description. That was a delay. We approved that the previous board. The job was advertised, and I was told we had candidates, but that was stamped out when the leadership was changed. I don't like being out of compliance. I don't. I like to be able to follow the rules. The one thing I like to be able to say is that certain check the box, she did what was right, if I know what's right to do. And so we haven't been able to fill that position. We haven't gotten, they haven't had interviews, it's my understanding, for an internal audit position. If I'm wrong, please just charge it, I didn't know that. But I'm bringing this to the board now. The Audit General's Office will allow the board, school boards, to hire an external firm to conduct an internal audit. And I've spoken to Mr. Andrew about this in private, and I haven't seen any movement on it. So I am going to, I need one of you all, I can pass the gavel and make the motion myself, or I need one of you all to make a motion that we would, we would direct Mr. Andrew to work with our procurement department to, so that we can procure the services of an internal auditor to come into compliance with state statute. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, those are my three things. I don't?
Well, since you're on a roll, I'm going to jump on. And again, TSAs are my big thing, because we have classrooms that have subs in them, long-term subs, and they're, they're ISI schools. And so that's an operational thing, and we can't do that. But we can make a policy that we can't have TSAs assigned unless we have all of our classroom teachers in place. So we could make a policy for that. I'm not suggesting that we do that, but that is something that we could do, put a policy in place. And so I'm asking, and I looked at the list, I got the list, there's 61 TSAs on there. And some of them, you can't mess with, you know, you got the Camp Crystal people, the ESE. We don't even have enough of those ESE teachers on special assignments to, to take care of, of all the ESE students that we have. And there are some others, obviously, at a higher district level that you can't pull out. Their job is very, very important. And I'm not, I'm not saying that the other jobs of the other TSAs aren't important. As I said, I followed one. I, I shadowed one the whole day. Now, their job's important. Is it, do I still think that there's more value for that person I followed and probably 10 or 15 of the other ones to be in the classroom? Yes, I do. And if you've gone, if you've gone to schools and you've been in classrooms, you'd see it's very difficult, especially at the elementary level, for a sub to come in there and be effective. And we have, we have subs, long-term subs in SI schools that have been there all year. And those kids, the learning is, is zilch. And if we come back on testing and it turns out that these kids are doing amazing, I'd be surprised and I'd question the testing based on the teaching. And so I think it's really important, I mean, we're here for the kids. I think it's really important that some of those teachers on special assignments are moved back into the classroom. And, and you can, and you know, you, you have the argument, well, we have beginning teachers. Well, we do have beginning teachers, but we don't need 10 teachers on special assignments to work with those beginning teachers. To me, it's more important for a teacher to be in a classroom and influence. it's more important for a teacher to be in a classroom and influence, have a positive influence on 22 kids in that class than for a teacher to, to find tuner skills and, and, and I, I've been talking about that ever since I've been in, because I think it's really, really important. And so I don't know what to do to get the motion moving about that, but I think it's very important, and I guess I'm requesting, that we look at that and we do something with it, because I've requested five, six times. And, and the school year is zooming by. And so these kids are going to go a whole year with long-term subs, and some of them probably had long-term subs last year. And, and teachers on special assignments, they have a, if, if we have classroom teachers, it's a wonderful, wonderful asset for our district. But, and, and I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you, those are, those are jobs that teachers work a long time to get, because they're, they're good jobs. I mean, you don't have to deal with parents, you don't have to do lesson plans, you don't have to do grades. And so, you know, yeah, they're plum jobs, and it doesn't mean they can't get them back. But right now, we need teachers in the classroom for these kids, especially at these SI schools.
So, thank you, Ms. Abbott. I, we can't make a policy tonight, because our policies have to go through a rulemaking process, and it takes longer. And I don't, the time period, we may be past spring break before we get through that. So that's that. And operationally, that is, the superintendent assigns folks at that level. We just have authority.
I know, and I got that. And that's why I'm saying, we don't, we can't make that change. We can ask for that change to be made, and we can stress the importance of it. But if it doesn't get made, we can establish policy, which would be very extreme, because there are, there are teachers on special assignments that we need to have doing what they're doing. But there are some that, that, that need to be in the classroom.
Like, I, I agree with what you are saying about the teacher, the students needing a certified teacher, but I think that's even, the problem that we have here, like, the issue I discussed with Mr. Andrew the other day was, I've, I've been a proponent of schools not getting anybody hired until these schools get hired.
Oh, I, I mean.
Because I look, if you look on, did you look on the staffing, like, last meeting? In this meeting, there were new teachers hired, people hired at schools that were not SI schools. So while in Alachua and Metcalf, and those, they've had these long, long things. So the, some of the people that are teachers on special assignment, I know, applied for their job with that title. So I don't know if, how that goes with us moving them. But that's what superintendent, I said, Mr. Andrew's light, so, and so I'm going to let him respond.
Thank you. So I just want to receive clear direction. If it is the direction of the board to reassign TSAs to the classroom, then I would like to hear that direction from all board members.
So you've heard Ms. Abbott, Ms. McGrath, you?
My thing is, I don't have a problem with that, but I would, I would go even a step further. You know, everybody in the districts, we may have to decentralize some things, and I said that before. Right now, we need all hands on deck. So I, I understand what she's saying. But right now, when, when we're going out and visiting these schools, things are just not happening academically to help make sure our kids are going to be where they are. So I don't have a problem with that. But even, there, there are some people who work in the district who said, I wouldn't mind going out and helping, you know, teach who have that background. Because right now, we're in a crisis, and I just hope everybody can see that. So I agree with that. But, because as I'm walking around, we getting ready, I'm just saying, for example, we getting ready for testing. I think writing is coming up. And if we got kids writing essays, do we know if they can even use a computer? Because they got to do this on the computer, from what I understand. Do they know what a shift button is? And so, as I said again, it's going to take all of the staff that, you know, coming together, because we're going to be tested on proficiency, and right now, I don't see it. And when it doesn't happen, it's going to come back to this board. So I, I agree with that. So if you need a motion, but I, I would like to see other people who I know in this district, you got to help. You know, if we're, it's not about the money, to me. If we're really concerned about children, we're in a crisis. Everybody needs to get on board. Thank you.
Dr. McNeely? Need some water?
I heard, excuse me, I heard my colleague, Mrs. Abbott, and I understand fully what you're saying. But I also understand the need for some of our teacher specialists or teachers on special assignment, those that have been delivering what the administration has asked, and we can see a difference in learning opportunities as well as teaching opportunities. I could, I, I need some more information. And, and Kay, please know that I'm not saying totally no, but I have, as you have, been in classrooms, in the school, in a leadership role, and we know what it entails, and we know why you're saying what you're saying, because some children really, truly need certified teachers and not long-term subs. I, you know that every retired folk, person that I see, I beg for them to come back. I beg them, literally, and they laugh at me, many of them, and say, go away. But I have not stopped requesting and asking, because I'm on the same page with you about what our children need, especially our most vulnerable kids.
Are we looking?
So, so before, we're not voting tonight. You're making a recommendation. And so I'm going to go over with you, but I may change in midstream. Please know. I need more information. I need some more time. In some of the schools, you may be referring to every site, but I know we need the help in our seven SI schools. I know that.
Okay. And I just, I just want to say, how long are we going to wait? Because we've had TSAs for years. And, and what, and what, how we, how can, how do we have proof that, that, that they've been, we have seven SI schools this year. Have we had that many in a while? And so at some point, we, we have to stop waiting. We have to think. I mean, you know, we have to think about these kids sitting in a classroom that are not getting what they need, and then they're going to move on to the next grade. Then they're going to be in middle school and high school, and they're going to be gone.
Kay, I don't have the sheet that you have. I asked for it today. And I, I'd like to see that.
I have a sheet.
I would like to see the other sheet with our teacher specialists and teachers on special assignment. I've requested that. I've said it to Mr. Andrew. If we have that many who could replace teachers, absolutely, and, and their willingness, because I don't need a warm body to be in a class, and they're not even doing as much as a long-term sub.
But the thing is, is that, God, I've lost my whole train of thought.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. The thing is, is that we just really can't afford to, to wait any longer. And making changes is hard. It's uncomfortable for the superintendent to have to tell TSAs or Ms. Wise or whoever tells them they have to go back to the class. It's, you know, it's, it's uncomfortable. But it's also uncomfortable for me to see those kids in the class. And for me, you know, I know, I already know TSAs don't like me. I've gotten enough emails for that. I know that people, I'm not popular, but you know what? I'm here because I went through all that election, because I want to do something differently for the kids. And I think that, that we have to, we have to start moving. We can't, we can't just keep dawdling around, because we have to have action.
So have we?
I know your urgency. I understand it. I feel it.
We all got some.
All folk, you're singing to the choir. What do you need, Mr. Delaney?
I certainly don't mean to interrupt, Dr. McNeely. I, I may have a suggestion or a proposed solution.
Okay, thank you.
It certainly would be within the board's power to request a report from the superintendent on a breakdown, item by item, of all of these teacher specialists or teachers on special assignments, exactly what they're doing, and whether the superintendent has a recommendation if they could be moved to a different location.
Thank you. And I did that tonight, Mr. Delaney.
And that's what I was going to say. I was trying to give a suggestion. Let's, have we really looked at these TSAs? I know Ms. Abbott has, but maybe we need to look at this as a board quickly. We may need to have another meeting, because I would say, for example, with CTE, which is important too, you know, you got some TSAs in, in CTE, which some of these kids need, that's not going on to college. I don't know if we need to, you know, look, touch those, but maybe look at it.
Let's, let's pull this back. So what we, what just, what I just heard you say, we wading into the superintendent about what, or assigning someone. So I'm, I'm not going, when we appointed Mr. Andrew, he has the authority.
Right.
To make certain decisions. And I'm not going, I'm not going to be the scapegoat. You know what needs to get done. You know the needs. I asked Mr. Shellnut to give us this. Your team, you, you meet with Ms. Jones and the turnaround principals, I think, weekly. I think they meet every Thursday. And if you, being our superintendent, our leader, you've got to make that hard choice, to look at that list of TSAs, and you can ask your staff. I'm, I'm not one for just drafting people to tell them, but I am for when they apply for the job. I don't, I, I think, I want my, my push to be on the front end of where I'm assigning people to go. You, I've told you that. But right now, where we are, you as our superintendent, it is under your purview to assign staffing. And now, if I'm wrong, please straight me, Mr. Delaney. But I'm not, I, I hear you, and I have spoken that same thing. So, and I, and I know, and I'm not trying to drown you out. I, I agree with what you're saying. We need to staff these classrooms. I've been, I've been tooting that horn for four years. We need, we need to staff them. And I, but I'm with Ms., with Dr. McNeely. We could put somebody in there, and, and I, because I've been in classrooms too, where, a couple of classrooms where people didn't want to be there. So I, but I do, I do want these students to get a very good education, standards-based instruction. But I, that is Mr. Andrew's call. So he needs to huddle with Ms. Jones. We have a deputy superintendent over there, and they've got a team, and they have the listing that they've looked, I haven't looked at the listing, and they can see who has the appropriate certifications to work in certain areas. And they can ask for volunteers to go back. It's my understanding, some people have already gone back, have left positions and gone back into the classroom. I don't know how many. But I have been told by Ms. Rol and Ms. Lidenbach that they have a couple of people, or Ms. Jones, someone's mentioned that to me, that have gone back. But that's a superintendent's thing. So I think you have the direction. You've heard the tenor of your board, Mr. Superintendent, that we are in favor of having a certified teacher in those, those classrooms. Now, if that is reassigning TSAs there, if that's working with Mr. Del, Mr. Shellnut and doing something, I don't know. That's, that's operations as you. I, I only make $40,000. I'm not going, I'm, I'm making hard decisions, but I'm not making that one. Okay. Anything else on that one?
Well, we got strategic visioning going on, so tomorrow.
Tomorrow, we do. Yes. So on, are there any other board member requests? Or Superintendent Andrew, do you have any requests of, of us or of your staff before we move to the next section?
No, we can move to strategic visioning.
Okay. And that tonight, because in light of what our workshop is going to be on tomorrow, I don't, I was going to say that we really, I don't have anything, and I think everyone will say what they have until tomorrow.
Just invite them. I think we just.
So, so tomorrow, for the audience, I'll do as Ms. McGrath has said, our workshop is scheduled for 10:00 AM in the morning. And I apologize now, we moved the, changed the time to 10:00 AM, because the board members are going to a Florida School Board Association school finance training, which is very valuable for school board members. So we're going to meet in the morning at 10:00, and we're going to just have some strategic visioning, because we are really at a space where we don't have a plan that is being used, that's directing our work and guiding the work. And the board members need to let our superintendent know, and we need to be kind of in the room together, because having one-off meetings has just hasn't, hasn't been good. As well as letting the folks that's on the budget team know, because I'm, I'm the, the member on the budget committee, and we're, we're in the process of formulating our 2324 budget. And so most folks say you fund what your priorities are. And so the board is going to kind of have a chance tomorrow to sit down and talk and to discuss some of the things that are priorities for us and that we like to see happening and hopefully pursuing, you know, tomorrow morning at 10:00. And so we invite everyone to come, if you can, in person. Come. I don't know if it'll be on TV, but the YouTube, it'll stream on YouTube. Is there anything else?
Yes, cool.
We've passed citizen input, but I will let you go ahead. I was asking, that's, okay.
Okay. Thank you. So, tonight has been very interesting. It's one of the first school board meetings this year I could make so far with my very, I guess you could say busy schedule. But I don't think anyone else in the room is of the age of 18 or under, or attends any high school or middle school or elementary school. But I find the problem that we have with our students is, and better yet, it's not a problem, it's a disconnect between the teacher and the student. Because we see students as people who are supposed to come to school every day with these perfect imaginary lives, and supposed to do work and get As and Bs. And I've, I've been told Cs go to col, Cs get degrees. That's like the little singer, whatever. But what we're starting to forget is that students are children. Even at 18, yes, as well as I would like to tell my mother, I am grown. I do not like bills. Not at all. I just put in for a credit card. And I do not like those $25 a month that I have to pay on that credit card to build my credit. I don't enjoy it. So as we're sitting here and talking about all the things as far as transportation goes, and as far as you guys going in and sitting on buses, that's great, but that's not enough. Sitting on a bus for one day, yeah, the kids are going to be quiet. I'll be quiet if you come sit in the classroom all day. We could talk about how the assistant principal of the school sits in a teacher's classroom, the kids are like angels. But that's not what's happening when that assistant principal walks out. So if we're talking about the job of the elected officials, and that you could look at the political system that we have right now, it's not serving justice, not to the next generation. There is no one on this board that I can see that's probably under the age of 30. So, which is not in our generation. You guys are not millennials, no disrespect, there's nothing wrong with that. But these are not millennials sitting on our board tonight. And even with the young lady who we had, Ms. Haas, who was the student representative, she brought some insight and some light to the school board, but it was not enough. It's not enough students coming to this very school board meeting who need to speak out about these things. There's not enough ideas or the provisions that you're doing in these policies. They're all so great. But children don't want to read SS-9, da-da-da, the school board. It's not important to us. And honestly, it's not important, because how do we see the effect of change that it's bringing? And it's not bringing any change, because, I mean, I've been in the school board meetings since I was in ninth grade. That's insane. What freshman comes to school board meetings for fun? No, they do not. So as we're sitting here thinking, and as far as going into this year of 2023 through 2024, we have to start thinking about things such as, how, not only can we pass students and graduate, but how are you about to give this next generation your seats? Start thinking about the next people who you want to have your seat. Like, that's great. The former people, Rob Hyatt, Paul Gunnison, Mildred Russell, it's gone to you guys. So your job is to create something new, or to cultivate a new thing. The first thing that I saw when you all won was, we're ushering in a new female school board. That was great for diversity aspects and headlines, I'll be honest. It was great for headlines. But the problem was, it was not enough for students to become more involved with the all-female school board. So as you're talking about students and that quote that's on the board, we are committed to the success of every student, come into the mindset of the child, of the 18-year-old child, or the five-year-old child, that doesn't understand what's going on really in the environment, and better yet, does not understand the state of the nation that we live in. Because Joe Biden may say tonight that the State of the Union is well and good, but I'm here to tell you as an 18-year-old student, the State of the Union is not well, and it's not good. And the generation that is coming is not prepared to take it on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galloway. I appreciate you speaking with us. And you going to run?
In the future.
That's another, that's a question there. Is there anything else, anyone else? Okay. All right. If, if all hearts and minds are clear, adjourn. You don't, you can keep it, if you like. You don't, you can keep it if you like.
Thank you. Take it, take it, what you want.